Where is Ed?
East Randolph. Off of Chelsea.
There you go. Creative writing. Don't go to that.
Congratulations.
Planning Commission to ask questions of the applicant in Randolph Center Solar regarding this proposed array on East Bethel Road. I think there's also a member of the PUC here, is that true? There ought to be.
We're here from the Public Service Department.
Okay. All right. So as we start this off, I guess let's start with introductions. Camden Walters, you chair the planning commission.
I'm Jerry Claus of planning commission.
Michael Tragnum, planning commission.
Harry Anderson, planning commission.
Matt Schindler, planning commission secretary.
And Miles Superrest here.
Not sure.
All right. Would the applicants like to stand up and introduce themselves?
Sure.
This is Miles Superrest. Sorry.
I'm starting with that one.
I just want to talk about some of this right here. So I'm Jonathan Wilson with Nextera Energy Resources. I was previously at Ranger Solar when we were developing this project in 2015 and 16. In 2016 Ranger Solar sold all of our assets in New England to Nextera Energy Resources. As part of that portfolio sale, a number of our staff members from Ranger Solar actually came over to Nextera Energy Resources, including myself and my boss who is familiar in this town, Aaron Svetlow, who is a leading member of Ranger Solar as well. So some of you are familiar with me, I have some familiar faces based on some of the work that I did with the neighbors a couple of years ago. The project, it's been a couple of months since I've been in town and talked about it, but we're in a very similar position than we were when we last spoke. The site design hasn't changed too much, but we are approaching the permitting phase of the project sometime in the next couple of months. So we filed our 45-day notice here in April, similar to what we did in April of 2016 when we filed our initial 45-day notice. And we meant that as kind of a means to kick off, re-kick off and reintroduce ourselves to this community and let everybody know that this project is, you know, still moving forward and to just kind of re-engage. And so we're really kind of answering the questions which we don't have and talk about the project. I have a site plan here and we also have first draft of an aesthetic mitigation plan which we will be filing as part of our certificate of public good application. We welcome comments on this, especially from the neighbors on the areas of concern and areas where we can pull up that mitigation. And so please feel free to come take a look if you have a question or need it and we can kind of set it for us. But that I guess I'll turn it over to either Q and A or however you want to do it.
Jonathan, can you just point out on the map where the solar panels will be? It's sort of hard to see there and I'm sure some people are familiar with it, but not everybody. So if you could just put your hand with your finger where the solar panels will be.
Sure. It is a little bit light, but similar to 2016, there'll be panels here, kind of this is adjacent, a couple hundred foot setback from I-89. East Bethel Road is here. The panels will kind of continue through a wooded area, again setback hundreds of feet off of East Bethel Road, and then again on the east side of East Bethel Road here on Sal's and Sal's State Department. This is setback at its closest point about 500 feet off East Bethel Road where it kind of slopes down. We did a site visit actually in 2016. We're happy to do another one here in the spring if the town or anybody would like to go out and again see the site. We're happy to host that again just to get a real feel.
Can you talk about the acreage that's considered by each of the quadrants or extensions?
Sure. So it's about 40 acres east of East Bethel Road and a little bit closer to 60 on this side. Generally, a 20-megawatt project, which is what this is, takes about 100 acres or so of space to build. So the actual parcels that are a part of this is, in total, is well over 200 acres, but we'll be using about 100 acres.
Can you talk about where the power is going?
The power, this project was selected by the utilities in Connecticut to meet their renewable portfolio standard. So the energy and recs will be bundled and sold to the Connecticut utilities to meet their portfolio. This was part of a large solicitation that Connecticut did, their Department of Energy and Environmental Protection did a couple of years ago. In consortium, there's a second RFP, a tri-state RFP that is Massachusetts, Connecticut, and around. And they chose, I think, over 30 projects around the region. So these are all ISO New England, which is a region of great authority. These are regional projects that can be, the power can be kind of bought and sold throughout New England.
Do you have a contract with Connecticut?
We have a contract with Connecticut, with the utilities of Connecticut. So you're not at eliminating and ever service. Connecticut eliminating.
So what are the benefits for the town around that?
The town gets significant tax revenue from the facility with no additional services provided. We've also previously talked while we were at Ranger Solar and the conversation is certainly ongoing, we're happy to continue about kind of a separate economic development agreement. The way solar is taxed in Vermont, a lot of that revenue goes straight to the state. And so Ranger Solar's projects that are not Nextera projects in Brandon and Ludlow have specific economic development under this particular town and we'll be happy to talk about that.
Would it be like what it was with Ranger Solar where the town got about $87,000 and you made $5 million a year selling the recs? Is that a good number?
I'm not sure exactly what, how that would be. I don't know what the rec revenue is specifically off this project. And I'm not sure, we would need to discuss with the town exactly what the economic development would look like. We can talk about specific projects especially and like priorities of the town and how we can direct that capital to meet my speed. I like the Randolph Re-Energize project. I'm hoping we're going to be in touch with James Lutz and see if there's any kind of ways that we can...
Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. I love the Randolph Re-Energize program and I want to talk with some of the organizers of that to see if there's funding opportunities that we can find ways that we can support that effort. Just what I want to do is engage with the community to see what kind of projects would make the most sense for the town that we can try to support. And that's what we've done with other towns in the past and so that's what I'm hoping to do here in Randolph.
Could people identify themselves as they make a comment before they make a comment?
John Penatalli, East Randolph. So would the tax revenue be about 87K per year?
I don't remember exactly what the breakdown is for the local municipalities. It sounds about right.
Is that per year? I don't know.
That would generally be anywhere.
So my understanding is that the solar projects do not cause the real estate to be reappraised by the town, whereas, you know, if there were a house built on a piece of property, obviously the property would need to be reassessed and then the property taxes would be calculated on that new value. So first, is it true that there is no impact to the grant list in terms of the project that you're citing? Secondly, what money, tax revenues, benefits, whatever that you're talking about, how are those calculated and provided to benefit the town?
So I can't really speak to the grant list for reappraisals. That's not, that's definitely a question for the town. And the state of Vermont kind of has a specific rate, solar is taxed, and I'm not exactly sure what the dollar breakdown is.
Can't hear you. You gotta keep talking louder, Jonathan.
I'm trying.
Well, you're fading out back there.
All right. Well, there's like a $4 per KW, a uniform capacity tax in Vermont, and then there's a portion of that that's also distributed to the town, and I'm not exactly sure what that distribution is. In this case, it's certainly a question that we can follow up on and we're going to have our tax team do that breakout, but I don't have an answer.
And so I guess this all feeds in, and I'm sorry if I didn't mention anything. I'm Brooke Dingledine, I was in the realm. So then in terms of demonstrating to the Public Utility Commission the economic benefit to the state or that this is accomplishing the energy efficiency goals of Vermont, how is it that you will be able to demonstrate that if all the energy and the recs are going out of state and basically you're just coming here to use our land to benefit the state of Connecticut?
Sure. So again, this, Vermont participates in a regional market called ISO New England and utilities import and export power throughout that market kind of all the time. That's why Vermont gets a lot of power from Hydro Quebec. We import from Seabrook Nuclear. We, it's just how regional markets develop. And so projects here in Vermont, what we do is extensive economic analysis. We have a team of economic advisors, it's an outside third party, Daymark Energy Advisors, and they do extensive economic analysis on how this power impacts the regional price of power, job benefits in town, tax benefits in town, things of that nature as well. And so that's a larger piece of our budget.
But that still doesn't, but that still doesn't address the, you know, we are under a policy in Vermont that was put in place by our last governor of reaching renewable energy efficiency by the year 2050 or whatever the percent is.
Ninety.
Ninety percent. So this in fact does nothing to accomplish that goal, isn't that true?
This, yeah, this does not count towards Vermont's renewable portfolio standards. The utilities of Vermont would have needed to purchase the power and the recs associated with that, and they did not. This was bid into an RFP and Connecticut chose that. So they will go towards offsetting Connecticut's, or meeting Connecticut's renewable portfolio standards.
So in terms of the size of this project, I understand this is proposed as a 20-megawatt project?
Forty.
And my understanding is there are close to 100,000 solar panels on about 100 acres of land. That is unprecedented in the state of Vermont, other than the other applications that your current company is pursuing presently, but in fact, this is a significant multiple or exponentially larger project than anything the state of Vermont has ever permitted. For example, I am involved as an attorney in Middletown Springs on a six-acre site. It's a 500 kilowatt project. That is considered by the Public Utility Commission to be a large project. So we're talking about six acres times whatever it takes to get to 100 acres. So this is so large. And I understand that recently New Hampshire just turned down their parent company for a project that was half this size. It was 10 megawatts and indicated that this was just vastly too large for them to permit and they focused primarily on the impervious surface and the soil runoffs. So my question to you is what analysis and standard do you think that you have to meet to prove to the Public Utility Commission that this is not destroying prime act soils despite the fact that in the past the Public Utility Commission has taken the position that a, say, 30-year project is temporary, so there's no permanent destruction of prime act soils?
There is a lot in there. So first, this will be the second 20-megawatt project. We're currently going into construction for a 20-megawatt project in Ludlow, Vermont that was approved and got through the certificate of public good process. We do advanced studies on impacts on soils. We coordinate closely with state agencies like the Agency of Natural Resources and the Department of Agriculture to study those impacts. So we're confident that we will work out a management plan around stormwater. Stormwater is its own permit that's separate from the certificate of public good, but we will have a unique stormwater management plan for the construction and operation of this project, similar to the one that we did in Ludlow that received a CPG last year and is going into construction. And we use a lot of the same phasing and a lot of the same, excuse me, a lot of the same protocols that we used at that site and that the state accepted and approved of. So we'll apply that here. The project that you're talking about in New Hampshire, our West Portsmouth Street solar project, it did get turned down in local zoning this week, I think. And they did decide that the panels were considered impervious surface, but we're going to continue to work with that community on what exactly that means and if there's ways that we can expand our ground cover ratio by kind of adding property, you know, and kind of expanding that. So we're working through that docket in New Hampshire, but it's a, it's kind of a whole separation. Vermont, we're comfortable with our stormwater management plan and we'll be doing it fast. I hope that answered your questions? If there was more in there, you can...
I'll let everybody know.
Was the idea of retiring the recs to a Vermont utility ever considered?
Yeah, so we initially, Ranger Solar initially conceived of this project as a qualifying facility under purpa. And without going into a ton of details, that meant that the power would be sold here in Vermont, but the renewable energy credits are retired by whatever entity purchases them to offset their own, either greenhouse gas emissions if they're like a private company like Facebook buys a lot, or if it's a utility. So in this case, those recs have a value on a market and they would always have been sold. So Green Mountain Power could have bought the recs, they just, it didn't fit into their long-term supply mix at the time. So Connecticut is going to be retiring them.
A follow-up to that. Purpa in its perpetuity is to somewhat obligate a utility to buy power in the interest of the ratepayer.
Yeah.
Specifically renewable. And my question is, would, obviously you're going to start on me a scale here, would you be offering that power back to the utility at a greatly reduced rate from what a local generator would sell through the net metering program?
Our costs for projects like this, in order, without going too much into purpa because it's almost irrelevant to this project at this moment, but purpa requires that the utility purchase power from a renewable resource if we can meet the avoided cost of that buying power on the grid at a high level. So that is orders of magnitude cheaper than you would see in a net metering program. Yes, but that's, it's not really relevant to this project at this point.
Are you done, sir?
Yeah, I was actually going to say, though I'm less familiar with pricing for net meter projects, maybe the prices come down to purpa level.
Dan Kenny with Catamount Solar. I have 20 full-time employees working here in Randolph. We pay taxes here in Randolph. I'm all about solar. I have concerns, not on this particular project, but what this project will do to the grid. We've seen big projects go north in the Northeast Kingdom, Will Wind Project, that shut down the grid from people being able to then net meter. When I say people, I mean residents, I mean businesses, I mean schools, I mean hospitals. And if this project clogs the grid so that the utilities allow no more renewables onto the grid, yes, I'm selfishly here because it will put me out of business, but it will keep all our local farms, all our small businesses that want to have their own renewable electricity from being able to generate it here in Vermont where we need the power. I have a lot of good friends in Connecticut. Some of them are farmers just like I am. They got a shit ton of land down there. Why aren't they building it on their own land?
Yeah. Here, here, yeah.
So I would, I would request that the CPG has a provision in it that it won't limit local families, farms, communities, hospitals, town or businesses from being able to net meter. And that has been a problem in Vermont. The Sheffield, the wind project up north in the kingdom has shut down the industry.
Yeah. All, there's two separate issues in there again. So we are developing projects in Connecticut. Connecticut is doing a lot of in-state resources. In all of their RFPs, it's preferable and they give preference to in-state resources. Nextera Energy Resources through our Ranger portfolio now has three projects, two very similar in size to this and one that's 50 megawatts in size in Connecticut. And there are other developers down there as well that also have 20-megawatt and larger projects. I'm not exactly sure what that number is at this point, if it's 10. But projects like this, 20-megawatt projects, as I'm sure you probably understand, they require certain really specific interconnection locations, like a substation, that can take a 20-megawatt power injection without impacting the distribution system in land. And so there are only really a handful of these project locations in each, in each state. And so Connecticut is doing their fair share, they just have a very high load. In the future, their load, it means they use a lot of energy. In the future, they're also going to be doing offshore wind and other RFPs to continue to try to make up for that large energy use. Second, the Sheffield-Higate Export Interface, which is the issue you're talking about in northern Vermont, where there's a lot of transmission constraints, is an extremely complex issue that is being addressed by all of the Vermont stakeholders, including Nextera Energy Resources. We participate in the monthly Vermont System Planning Committee meetings around the Sheffield-Higate Export Interface. We actually have some projects that again are contracted that are in the export interface and we feel like this is a thermal and voltage issue that can be addressed and it's going to require some out-of-the-box thinking, but will be addressed by stakeholders. A large part of that is going to be energy storage in the future to kind of simulate load, since there isn't a lot of Vermont energy use. Up there, there's about 400 megawatts of generation, if you include the 200 megawatts we import all the time from Hydro Quebec instead of building our own resources here. But we can simulate some load through storage and we'll see where that goes, we're engaged with the utilities to try to figure that out, kind of all together as a team, utilities, developers, everyone. But we're hoping that that's an issue that can get fixed. We just have to kind of, you know, figure it out. So some of that is also dispatch around the Sheffield wind and...
I don't want to figure it out three years afterwards while I've got the late eyes off because what's happening right now is that shutting down. If you look at a PMP map, if you look at maps of the utilities, there's red zones in the maps and that's where they won't let us build. So let's say that Wal Goldfinger wants to put 500 KW on their roof or whoever moves into that building, they won't be able to net meter that if this is a red district. And we need to keep local jobs here in Vermont. 60 jobs for six months is diddly poo. It's not going to help us, it's not going to... Last time we had a big out-of-state developer come in, guess where everybody stayed? They stayed in the Upper Valley, they didn't spend a nickel in Randolph. And they came up and they built stuff and they went back to the Upper Valley and drank their beer at the restaurants down there and ate their burgers at the restaurants down there and it didn't do diddly squat. We need to be smart about this. We need to look long-term. Vermont needs to get there and this doesn't get us any closer. Now again, I would love to be involved with the project at the right scale, the right size for our community. I know our farmers are struggling to have land. I don't particularly, I mean, I drive this road, but I don't exactly know who, what land it is and I don't want to take anything away from the landowner, but I think as a community and as a state, we need to get our shit together and start saying, if we want to hit our 90% we got to get on the train and we're not even at the frickin' tracks yet. And I've been doing this for 18 years. I'm not new to this.
So I agree with everything you just said, actually. Like I grew up in Vermont, I went to college here, went to Vermont Law School, like I'm with you. And I think we do need to put our foot on the gas around our greenhouse gas emissions goals and around our RPS. In this case, it didn't fit into Green Mountain Power's IRP plans and how they were acquiring new renewable energy. I would love if this project was selling its power in state.
I want to be a stakeholder on your CPG because we need to have some type of guarantee that this does not shut down net metering to this local community.
So I'm sure that that will be something like in department reports, I know Ed McComer has done this, on other dockets where they've looked at like how will this project impact the locational marginal pricing of our facilities like Kingdom Community Wind? And that gets into a whole different conversation beyond probably what we should be talking about at a planning hearing, but that certainly will be part of the docket. And Daymark Energy Advisors, again, our economic advisors, will be looking at that issue as part of our CPG, CPG docket. It could be a condition, I don't know, but that's not for me to say.
Can I just follow up since it's on this same issue? Instead of worrying about conditions where what's going on, you know, elsewhere or, you know, regionally about the grid, I'm glad to hear you're a lawyer because 30th VSA Section 248b10 requires you to demonstrate regarding existing or planned transmission facilities that the project can be served economically by existing or planned transmission facilities without undue adverse impact on Vermont utilities or customers. That is what this gentleman is referring to, not off somewhere elsewhere or some kind of group that's trying to figure out Vermont or the region or anything. What we're talking about is, and I would like you to answer, what is the situation on the ground in Randolph Center with regard to how are you getting this power off-site? Over whose land are you going to be traversing? Have you received actual easements in order to traverse that land and what infrastructure is required to get it from the site onto the grid? How far is it? And further, once you get to Green Mountain Power lines, what upgrades, if any, are necessary? And what is the situation with regard to capacity that exists right now versus the 20-megawatts of power that you're going to be sending through the grid?
So a lot of that is addressed through the ISO New England interconnection process. And so we are filing a small generator interconnection application for ISO New England to facilitate these interconnection studies. And so the stakeholders to this, Nextera, ISO New England, Velco, which owns the large transmission system here in Vermont, owns and operates, and Green Mountain Power will be doing these studies to say, okay, if you inject 20 megawatts into this facility, into the existing Randolph 46 kilovolt substation, what are the impacts? Do, you know, are there any, they call them network upgrades, where there's a distribution line that needs to get rebuilt or something? All of those costs are borne by our project. They're 100% attributable to us and it's compensated through our power purchase agreement that we have with the Connecticut utilities. And so the, that process ensures the stability and reliability of the grid and ensures that our project is not negatively impacting rate curves. It's a whole separate issue to the one in the Sheffield-Higate Export Interface, which is more around behavior of bidding entities. is more around behavior of bidding entities. And that's a more complex issue, but there won't be any costs directly associated with the 20 megawatts that we are injecting because we bear the cost of those upgrades. There's a line that needs to be rebuilt, we rebuild it. Now, the second part of that, how are we getting to the substation? We are working with Green Mountain Power to do, to hopefully, this, we're still working with them on this, to use their existing poles that they have there to travel from our site back to the substation that's existing. And we will build our, and this will all be done in the ISO New England process and then working out with GMP the easements, but hopefully building any transformer that we need on the existing site next to their substation, on their farm site.
Do you take the position that you only have to negotiate with Green Mountain Power and somehow you can piggyback on their easements? Are you going directly to the landowners over whose land the GMP easements run to actually negotiate with them and find out if they are willing to allow you to have your lines in the same location as the Green Mountain Power lines?
Sure. You agree? It's going to be a multi-step process. First is going to be, is this feasible with Green Mountain Power? Is this something that we can do where they can handle the maintenance? That's all an ongoing discussion. Then after that, if it is feasible, we will continue that discussion with the landowners and however else we need to do it. If that doesn't work, we'll need to find an alternative group to get our collector line back to the substation.
All right, so then.
And we'll do all that before we file our CPG.
One last question about Green Mountain Power. According to Green Mountain Power, they do not cite a solar project in the town if the town is not supportive of it, they go away. That is their policy, it is how they, a policy they have adhered to and they have abandoned projects because of it, because the town is in a position that this isn't right for our town. Are you making that same commitment as Green Mountain Power? And if not, do you see that as an obstacle to negotiating with Green Mountain Power since they, if the town is not in support of this, they would not be in support if you go away?
That's certainly a conversation we can have with Green Mountain Power. I can say that of our other projects that we have here in Vermont, we have a letter of support from each one of the communities that supports our docket. And we're hoping for one here, we're going to continue to work with the Randolph State Board and other stakeholders here to try to get that local support and try to ensure that this is, this is a project that meets community needs. And so that's certainly an ongoing discussion that we're going to have and hopefully something that, that we can apply our experience elsewhere to here. Davenport Solar and Brandon reiterated their support of our project for us this week.
Gary, your energy committee.
Gary, Gary, Gary.
Hang on, get someone's back.
Yes, I do not live in town. My name is John Bravant. I work for Vermonters for a Clean Environment. I just want, you didn't answer the lady's question here, so I just wanted to reframe the question and add some more information based on information I received from one of your representatives. The representative I spoke with, who used to work for Ranger Solar, his name is Jason Gibbs, he used to work for you, and I spoke with him at the State House before the last election. And he told me that Ranger Solar's policy was to never force a project upon an unwitting town. So this project is now going, being put forward by not Ranger, but Next Era, correct?
Yeah.
Is Next Era going to adopt the Ranger Solar Company's policy with regard to seeking town consent and only moving forward with, in particular, this project with the town's consent? And conversely, if the town disagrees with this project and does not want to see it cited or cited at this scale, will Next Era honor that Ranger Solar policy and leave town or downsize the project?
Sure, that was definitely a commitment we did make at Ranger Solar and to, for clarity's sake, Jason Gibbs was a consultant for Ranger Solar, he wasn't a part of it.
He was representing you at the time.
Yes. I cannot unequivocally say that if we don't get a letter of support from the city, from the town of Randolph, that we will not still apply for our certificate of public good. We now have contractual obligations through our PPAs, our power purchase agreements, to try to get this project permitted. And so it is certainly our top priority to ensure that we get a letter of support from Randolph, but I can't unequivocally say.
So your answer is you will not necessarily honor the town's, respect the town's position in this regard? And you may forge ahead despite the town being opposed to your project, correct? Yes or no?
It is our hope that the town is.
Yes or no? Yes or no? I know you went to Vermont Law School. Yes or no?
We hope over the next weeks and months.
Yes or no?
Oh, shut up, Sean.
No, you shut up, Chris. Chris, you created this monster, buddy. And I got you on video, I'm glad, Commissioner. I just asked for a yes or no answer.
Sure, so this is again, a reintroduction of.
Nice guy, Chris.
And we're hoping to continue the communication. I'll be in town quite often and really need a time I need to meet with town officials, to meet with the neighboring landowners, to ensure that we do get the support of the local community before we enter Vermont. That's our will.
Back to Dan's point. Randolph became a designated town for Act 174 and we're on the line. The state of Vermont came down here and said, we're going to do this, this, and this. And at Dan's point, we will not be able to do this, this, and this without net metering. And if we are blocked off for net metering, we won't meet the Vermont goals in 25 or 15.
So that, is there, do you have a question?
No, it's a statement.
Sure. Now, I am fairly certain from my understanding of the Vermont system planning, that a 20 megawatt project here is not going to result in issues like we have in Northern Vermont. I can unequivocally say that. And I do support net metering and I do hope, I really hope that Vermont's community solar and net metering community continues to be strong. It's had some rough times after some net metering changes. It's a, it's a separate.
Well, we went through this two years ago and they set a cap on that and I don't see that changing.
That sounds like a policy issue for the legislature and for, it's not so much related to our.
Well, I'm going to take back to the legislature on that issue. You signed us up for these things and we can't do it unless we have net metering.
I agree that, yeah, net metering is extremely important to Randolph's renewable energy growth.
And we will go to the legislature.
Yeah, yeah. It's not in either role, I agree with that. And so I support Vermont's net metering industry.
Okay. So John?
All right. John in the corner?
I have three questions. First, I hear you use a number of phrases such as, we're going to figure it out, we're going to work on, we're going to continue to work with, et cetera. Can you show me, can you please show me, since you're thoroughly involved with this project, what the potential effects are on the soil and water over a 15 to 20 year period? Could you please show me the studies which make the determination, which you're indicating that there's, that there's no effect, that the panels are impervious, et cetera? So that's the first question. The second question is, I see here people not only from East Randolph and Randolph Center, I see people here from the entire town of Randolph. My understanding is that you are seeking some sort of approval or certificate from the state level for the quote, "public good." We here in Randolph are part of the public. Can you please tell us what, what is the public good that you're doing for the town of Randolph specifically? And the third is, you have a couple of areas there that are marked F. They are areas near the interstate and they are also near the beginning of the Hungerford Brook. Can you please specifically tell me if and how any potential deterioration from the panels over a 10, 15, 20 year period will or might affect the start of the Hungerford Brook, which starts about a mile and a quarter away from my property? Because that is pretty steep land right around there. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so.
My name is John Mizuka.
So I will defer, I have with me our lead consultant, TRC, our environmental consultant, they lead our permitting efforts here, and I'm going to defer those questions, he's much more qualified to answer, one and three. And so.
Sure.
What you were talking about, I have our aesthetic mitigation plan, so this is a slightly different one, but F is here, this is what you're talking about?
Can you, that will back up again in a second.
Okay.
So again, Dan Herslinger with TRC Environmental, working on pulling together the environmental permits and other various reports that will be submitted with the, sorry, I don't have a place to stand here. That will be submitted with the.
Excuse me, before you go further, where are you from?
Sorry, TRC Environmental.
Where, where is that?
I work in Maine.
You work in Maine?
I live in Portland, Maine.
Okay, that's really not relevant at this point, okay?
Okay, I just didn't hear what he said he was, where he was.
So for context, TRC oversees this environmental work on a number of our projects in multiple states. They're a large civil engineering firm. And then our civil engineering and design work and our wetland scientists, they're all licensed here in Vermont, Krebs and Lansing, does the engineering work and they're in Essex, in Milton. And so they oversee that work.
So the first question was regarding waters and soils and the impact of the project on soil and water and wetlands at the site over a 20 year period. So we're pulling together, it's called a Natural Resources Assessment Report, which looks at all those different environmental criteria, which includes soils, waters, wetlands, outstanding resource waters, rare species. And that report, that NRA is the acronym, the NRA report gets submitted with a Section 248 filing. And so at a hot, we're still, we're still developing that report, but at a very high level, we've cited, you know, this project, all the panels were, the layout of the panels and the access roads and associated infrastructure is all cited outside of wetland resource areas and streams. And in addition, it's also cited outside of removed panels, so there's no panels inside any wetland buffer zones, which are regulated under the state, the Vermont Wetland Regulations. So basically the infrastructure, we have buffers, we're maintaining buffers between wetlands, water bodies, and the facility. You can see, the closest point is actually one of our areas where we are, where wetlands are on site and we're close to wetlands is down in that corner, which I think is where you referenced the start of the Brook.
Does buffer mean prevent or decrease?
Sorry, what was that?
Does buffer mean prevent or decrease?
I think buffer would, would prevent, it's a vegetative buffer.
You think?
Yes, yes, it would prevent, yes, because we have vegetation in between the resource area and the panels and fence line.
Those buffer distances are set by the state, the Agency of Natural Resources assesses those buffers and we stay out of them.
So that's where we moved this, so this area down here is, it's hard to say it here in the back, but you want to come up after. So you can see the clearing is all outside of the buffer as well as the fence line. So that's, that's one issue. I know that prime ag soils have come up quite a bit. And so we are planning to follow the guidelines from the agency of, the Vermont Agency of Ag, Food and Markets. They have guidelines on dealing with primag soils at a site so that the soils can be reclaimed after, after this project is decommissioned. Basically, at a high level, kind of involves temporarily stockpiling soils, segregating them, removing the A horizon and stockpiling that as needed in areas where there's going to be soil excavation. And the other question, storm, I think we also asked about stormwater. So the project again is going to be, we would file for a stormwater permit with Vermont A and R. And Krebs and Lansing is one of our civil engineers that's working on, that will work on the design of a stormwater management system to manage stormwater runoff at this site.
Are you saying that you don't have actually the studies, but that you are relying on others to do the studies?
They do the studies, yeah. TRC does the studies and we submit it as part of our certificate of public good. Those studies are complete. We took our results and we have provided them to the Agency of Natural Resources before we do our docket to get their input, to make sure that everything, that we've done it in a way that's acceptable to the state. And right now, I think, if you guys don't mind, I'm going to recede the floor, Mr. Reck and have more information to add here.
Good question. So how many, how many acres are ag soils involved here?
I don't have the number, the exact average on top of my head. I'd say it's probably, the majority of the site is prim, as mapped is primag soils.
Okay. And so like, I hear you saying, you know, the fact that they would be, you know, ultimately reclaimed because this is a temporary, temporary issue, but let's assume it's not. What would you do to compensate for the primag soils?
Should we assume that it's not, that's a good, I guess, a real question. What we do is consult with the Department of Ag and they tell us what to assume.
If you'd like a map for the primag soils. So the concept of, the concept of these, of the fact that this is a temporary.
A way that's acceptable to the state. And right now, I think, if you guys don't mind, I'm going to recede the floor, Mr. Reck and have more information to add here.
Good question. So how many, how many acres are ag soils involved here?
I don't have the number, the exact average on top of my head. I'd say it's probably, the majority of the site is prim, as mapped is primag soils.
Okay. And so like, I hear you saying, you know, the fact that they would be, you know, ultimately reclaimed because this is a temporary, temporary issue, but let's assume it's not. What would you do to compensate for the primag soils?
Should we assume that it's not, that's a good, I guess, a real question. What we do is consult with the Department of Ag and they tell us what to assume.
If you'd like a map for the primag soils. So the concept of, the concept of these, of the fact that this is a temporary impact is debatable. And that's one of the things that I think Randolph is, is an issue. So, so tell me about your, your evaluation of these soils, how you're addressing them, how you're going to both impact them and leave them, you know, based on what you're, what you're planning. Can you speak in a little more detail on this ag management?
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, but we're going to be bringing in, we've got Don and Ross. So we have, we're going to bring in, I'm not a primag soil expert, I don't know that. So we have a primag soil expert that we're going to be bringing into the project, who actually is on the project.
He's a.
He's a professor of EVM, correct, right. So I mean, basically, the idea is, as I kind of was talking about earlier, is that we follow the guidelines from the Vermont Agency of Ag, Food and Markets, and you're basically trying to, any place where there's excavation, you are retaining, you're segregating the topsoil and stockpiling that in certain areas, we would identify them on the site. We haven't developed that plan yet. The idea is we identify certain areas in the site where you would temporarily stockpile your excavated soils and you segregate the different horizons out. So when the project is done and you decommission it, you could then return the soils, restore the same soil profile that you had before the work began. And you also, in addition, that's sort of the construction phase aspect of it. At the beginning, before we get into that construction phase, we would actually go out and do some soil, collect some additional data on the soils to map the soil profiles, to your profile, what the existing soil conditions are right now.
So, bless you, but as a scientist, I would say that's impossible to like remove the soils in, you know, and take out the various segments of those in the back. That's not going to work. But I hear you.
Are you, are you speaking to, I mean, we do this all the time for a trench.
Right.
But immediately it's put back into the trench within three to five days. Are you talking about having stockpiled of primag stored in the back of this project for 30 years? Or are you talking about a trench that's going to be filled in in three to five days of it being done?
Yeah, any place where.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, I believe any place where you have a trench and there's nothing that's going to be sited on top of it, you would just back forth right away, exactly. You could segregate.
But are you talking about leveling spots to build this and stockpile it? 90,000 yards of primag soil somewhere to blow away in the wind?
I, that's.
Or to cover with plastic and look ugly for 30 years? What's the picture here? What's the picture?
I think we can probably provide better details based on our mudload docket that did receive a CPG and exactly how we plan to. and exactly how we plan to sequester. I don't think, I'm, I'm definitely not qualified to talk about how we sequester those. Um, but that's definitely something we've already been through this process on. It's, I mean, solar industry in Vermont is very mature. Uh, prime ag soils have solar on them here in Vermont and there's, there's protocols that we will continue to follow. And you can provide maybe more details now if you would take my contact info and.
I'd love to, I want to be honest, Vermont hasn't seen it done on this scale and we're nervous. I'm nervous as someone in the industry, because about two years ago, the industry got spanked, they changed the net metering loop. The people who are anti-solar kind of won, and I'm afraid that they're going to hear that, oh, they didn't even listen to us. Look at, they just dropped 100 acres of solar here and they pushed soil all over the place. And now, it's even going to get worse for us people that live here that try to make our living. I haven't done this for 18 years in Vermont. I'm proud to say I'm one of the people that helped build this industry. I don't want to see it go down the park. I also believe we need to find a way to do it on a scale that's right and manageable. Um, I, I really feel strongly like Randolph needs to take the long, long approach and 30 years isn't long enough.
Can you answer my last question about the public good? And you ran it right through?
Can you, can you restate it just so I can recall?
Uh, as I said, I see not only East Randolph Road residents here in Randolph Center, I see a lot of the town here, including the village. And the, my understanding is that you're seeking some sort of approval or certificate from the state regarding the quote, "public good." Can you please tell me what the public good is for the town of Randolph, where part of the public?
Sure, so, again, it's, this is significant long-term tax revenue for no additional services provided by the town. And we're happy to continue to engage with Randolph on, on any additional economic development packages. There are the temporary construction solar jobs in the beginning of this project. Um, those are really the, the benefits, I think, that unless you're talking about greenhouse gas.
Jobs and.
Jobs and tax revenue? Tax revenue? Is that, I can't, but here he is.
Tax, tax, what?
Tax revenue.
Tax revenue, can you, can you detail the tax revenue?
Yeah, I think we, we talked about that initially earlier, um, that there's, you know, a certain way that Vermont parses that out and a lot of the tax revenue goes to the state. I'm not exactly sure of what the dollar amount that goes directly to Randolph. Again, I can follow up with that information at a later date and we will certainly be talking about it directly with the town of Randolph. So, those are details that will definitely be supplied.
I already cited those numbers, but you agree. 87 grand.
Um, I have a comment after a quick question. Will your foundations be piles or blocks?
Um, this will be, there's no blocks, it'll all be piles. Yeah, so we do extensive geotech surveys out there, we send people out to do test pits and stuff, it'll be piles.
I'm familiar with it all. Um, I've worked on between five and 15 solar projects in Vermont, from varying sizes, couple acres to 15 acres. Coventry Solar Project, Stafford Hill for Green Mountain Power, et cetera. When you do the piles, you don't take any prime ag soil out. You drill it into the ground and that's it, all the left, all the rest is just left there. It'll be trampled over, it'll eventually grow back, I'm sure they'll have a vegetation management plan, but to answer your question, that's, that's how they do it.
It's like fence posts or like guardrails along, yeah, just driven straight down. If we do hit bedrock or something, we can, we can do screwing into that bedrock or certain ballast, but that's not planned for the site.
All the, all the way in the back waiting?
Hi, um, Cynthia Fulici, Randolph Village. Um, I've got a couple of questions. One is, um, basically, I'm going to back up what Mr. Reckian said. Uh, these are always seem to be proposed as temporary projects, but I really don't see the demand for electricity in Connecticut going down in 10 or 20 or 30 years. So, my supposition is that this will never really go back to ag cultural soils as long as solar, as long as the grid is up in any shape or form. Uh, and another question, I think I remember back in the Ranger Solar days, that they were talking about leasing the land. I'm not sure if you were talking about leasing or actually acquiring, maybe you could clarify that.
Sure, so the same land agreements that were in effect at Ranger Solar carried over. So, we have a combination of leases and purchase options on this site. So, it's a combination, uh, this area on the east side of the road will be purchased and the, the area on the west side of the road will be leased.
Okay.
And then, your second question, uh, we have a 20-year power purchase agreement with the state of Connecticut. Uh, these projects, we, we expect their lifespan to definitely be 25 years, it could be longer. Um, our lease agreements are certainly longer than that 20 years. So, we do think that these, these projects will continue to have economic value once that PPA is retired. But at that time, we can seek new power purchase agreements with, with any utility. Actually, in our Coolidge Solar, which is in Ludlow, in our, in the PUC's decision, they mentioned that after the initial power purchase agreement is complete, uh, this project could go towards meeting Vermont's greenhouse gas emissions goals in, you know, after that 20-year term.
So, can you say how long the leases are? You said they're longer than 25 years, are they?
I'm not going to talk about our specific agreements with the landowners, I feel like that's private. Um, but they are significantly longer than that 20 years. We also have to carry a restoration bond. So, whenever we decide that the project is no longer economically viable, we do have to restore, take out all of our improvements and restore the land to its previous condition.
And I have one further question, which is, you had talked about this being 100 acres and obviously some of it is either too steep or there's wetlands and, but you're talking about, you know, eventually acquiring 200 acres or maybe more. So, my question is, do you plan to double the size of this project? Do you plan to expand it in any way, shape, or form?
No, 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 what I meant, and sorry.
Do you know, ever?
Yeah, the, the, the way that this is done, your interconnection and then your certificate of public good are, are determined by this exact sound. And so, we would need to reapply, we go through permitting, redo our interconnection, uh, studies if we wanted to expand the project. So, when I was saying that there was over 200 acres here, the, the, the total parcel envelope that we have under lease or purchase is, is probably over 200, I, I don't know the exact acres.
I just assumed you wouldn't be buying land that you don't anticipate needing to actually utilize.
So, what I'm, when I'm saying that we're utilizing 100 acres, it's actually, it's this area that's fenced in or the tree clearing. It's this area for solar energy purposes that we have, it's about 100 acres built. Now, there's significant portions of, of the properties here that we are building on that are not built out. We're not building right to the property lines on all of these parcels. In fact, at least, especially on East Bethel Road on the east side, we're hundreds of feet set back. And so, I'm not including that in that 100-acre calculation, those seven, just, just the area that's like within our fence line of our solar project.
There's somebody in the far back a minute ago interested?
Yeah, Carolyn Lambra. I just, once the grid is full and you've used a lot of the transmission lines and Green Mountain Power decides that they need more transmission lines, are the ratepayers not going to have to pay for that?
Yes.
So, that goes a little bit back to what Mr. Kenny was talking about. Um, where as we add distributed energy resources like our project or like net metering or wind, um, we may need to build more transmission. It's the same thing that happens if, if we have more, significantly more use or if lines are old. And so, I can't speak to the overall Vermont system planning, that's like a Velco-related stakeholder issue that, that is ongoing. And they, they have to go through a public utility commission process to get all of those projects approved.
So, that just sounds like one of the good things that could happen to us, that we could pay for more transmissions lines on our bills.
So, any new, any new transmission upgrades that are associated with this project, we, we pay for, that's, that's what we do.
It's like a million dollars at least.
George Moore, Randolph Center. You know Jonathan, the question is, how much of this is active farmland now? How much of it is forest land, which you'll cut down and, and set up the wind? Without those trees up there on those hills and the wind, it whips down that valley, what are you going to destroy of the houses?
Sure, so.
That's a one part. Second part is, with these other projects you've had, how much value did the homeowner lose in sale value, in assessed value, that the town lost in taxes?
So, we'll start with the tree clearing and land use. First, the tree.
How much of it is, is active now?
Yep, so first with the tree clearing, um, we generally have envelopes around the areas where we're going to tree clear. So, like this area right here, there's going to be buffers of vegetation that, that aren't leaving. So, it's just going to be this area right here, I guess.
When you say vegetation, you mean trees?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so there's the existing trees that are there and then we are going to clear trees, um, kind of down really the center here and there's a little bit here on the south side. Um, I don't know the wind impacts, but there aren't really any residences in that area, it's just kind of on the backside of Mr. Richardson's.
Yes, there are, I live there, you know that, you've been to my house.
Right, but I have been to your house. We're not, we're not, we're not tree clearing within thousands of feet of, of your home. Um, so the second part would be, I'll cede to Dan about how many acres are, are cleared versus how many acres are in existing fields. Do you have that answer?
I think I do. So, I think, I believe the forest clearing number is about 49 acres or so is the forest clearing. And then, I believe the, um, 49 out of 100? Is that what you just said?
You just said 49 acres of trees.
49 acres and then the, uh, the, the farmland is, um, the prime ag soils, not, not prime ag soils, but areas in open fields, which much of that is prime ag soil, it's about 50 acres. And those are off the top of my head, I'm pretty sure that's, that's about what we've come up with, with our initial calculation.
I would say there's a little bit more acreage used for agriculture than there is for tree clearing, but it's, but it's pretty consistent. Kenny?
How about the property value?
Oh, sorry, I forgot about your second part of that. And, and Mr. Mammery, we've, I think, talked about this extensively in length. Um, but, uh, there aren't really a ton of studies that have been done, uh, because there aren't a lot of home sales in, in the vicinity. And so, I can't, and we, we've talked about it, I can't unequivocally say that there aren't property value impacts and I can't point and say that there, that, you know, what it is, you know, you lose 5% of your value. I, I don't have an answer to that question, it's a frequently asked question and I wish I had a firm answer, because it would really help me out.
Why don't you? Never mind, you just confused me, that's all.
Sorry.
It's been two years since we had this discussion.
So, I have, um, a question for, for you all, as well as a public comment that I can make. So, my question for you all, and you may, I apologize if you went over this at the beginning, but the processes, I understand it and some knows, obviously knows a lot more about this than I do, um, is that the town, if it wants to be, have an impact in all of this, needs to be submitting its own comments to the PUC. So, my first comment is just to encourage you all to make sure you have the best legal advice so that you get everything that you need to have on the record in this first round, because I know you're precluded in the next round unless of raising issues that were already raised here. Now, I don't think that probably applies, I'm hoping, to when they present more detailed information. But I would recommend that when you submit your letter to the PUC, which I assume, I hope, the town will be doing, even if you haven't decided how you're going to, how you feel about the project, that you raise all of the issues and say, these are concerns that we have, so that you still have the door open when it comes to participating in the PUC process, should the town decide to do that. Um, so, that's, and, and you may already have realized all that, so I apologize if that's something you're all going to be aware of. But I do hope you'll raise all the issues you have heard tonight, as potential concerns for the town. So, you're not precluded from pursuing them in greater detail later.
Can you please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jenny Carter from Randolph Center. And, um, my, uh, my comment I wanted to make is because I feel that often when these projects come up, um, people who aren't in favor of them are portrayed as being anti-renewable power or NIMBYs or anything like that. And I would like to be on the record of that I am generally in support of solar, solar projects, wind projects. I am a big fan of renewable energy, um, because I do believe there is a solution to climate change. However, or at least part of the solution to climate change. However, when you have got a project, so here's my comment, when you have got a project that is selling its RECs to another, A, one another state, um, B, that state, I, this project will not do anything to combat climate change, which is one reason I have concerns about it, because it is required by law. There, Connecticut already has laws that require how much renewable power needs to be generated, be it purchased through RECs or other ones. So, this is just going to meet a requirement that already exists. It is not going to add any new, um, renewable power, um, that will help combat climate change. So, I think, I would like to just point that out.
I will have to disagree. So, this is just.
May I just finish my comments and then, and then I'll just finish and then, and then I'm happy to take this break. So, that is one of my concerns with this is because I don't believe that we'll do anything to combat climate change. My second concern is regarding prime ag soils. Um, I attended a number of the hearings, um, at Exit Core and there were quite a few farmers, I don't know if anybody come tonight, who came and said they were like grabbing at any 10 acre parcel they could get, because they were having such a hard time finding good, even just hayland. So, um, in our town, I know, I have heard of farmers that have said that prime ag soils, preserving prime ag soils, it was of paramount importance to the farm community in this town. So, if they're, were concerned about talking about 10 acres and 15 acres, um, losing that at a time, losing 100 acres of prime ag and for at least a couple of decades, I think, is, is a problem for the town.
I think, I'll let, so, first, this project, the renewable energy credits will be sold, but yes, retired in Connecticut to meet their renewable portfolio standard. This is their requirement to build new renewables, similar, just like Vermont's. It's just being sold to another state, so in the accounting.
But it's already required to be built, so that it's, it's not a new.
But this is the built, this is the, that part of, it's required to be built, this is meeting those requirements in 2020 and beyond. They are acquiring, Connecticut is acquiring new renewable resources to meet their RPS. So, this will be going to offset Connecticut's greenhouse gas emissions. This is a regional project and that's how the accounting works. But it is a new renewable project that will be going to meeting an RPS in another state.
An RPS, it's already mandated, whether this gets built here, it'll get built somewhere else. It's definitely going to get built, not necessarily this particular project.
This is how it gets built though, these projects, like ours.
Yes, but I'm saying, but.
It's the same as.
It's not, it's not, they're, they're going to be built anyway, whether we allow it here or not, it's going to be built.
Skip, were you interested?
Yeah, Skip Tabor, I'm just having, I'm a little slow here, I don't want to heat anything up anymore than it already is. But a little while ago, you're, you're, you asked a question, I didn't get the right answer. Um, either yea or nay, we're here for yea or nay. And do actually, does I, do we have any say on yea or nay? Are you going to, you, like Ranger Solar, I've been to the meetings, Ranger Solar said, well, if you people do not want this, we're not going to do it. Now, but they can go ahead and do it anyways, that guy, he told us he could. But is that what's happening now? So, we're just running our mouths here and not getting anywhere, because you're going to do it anyways or, or what? Everybody can say yes, they love it, no, I hate it, I don't want to see it, but what's the bottom line?
So, when you say we, do you mean the town of Randolph or do you mean?
Everybody, we are the town of Randolph.
So, Mr., so, Mr. Tabor, you can apply for party status as a neighbor and, and participate in this document. Um, Randolph can also apply for party status and participate in this document.
That's not.
So, so, so we are going to pursue our certificate of public good application and you're going to.
That's not, the answer is, yes, you're going to do it anyways. No matter if I don't like it or I do love it, you're going to do it anyways. I just want to see your output, is that, is that fair to say?
We're going to continue to pursue our application, our certificate of public good.
Thank you, that's what I, that's my, that's what I asked.
Happy to leave now.
Marjorie.
Marjorie Ryerson, when Ranger Solar was proposing the same array in Randolph Center, they were going to build it and then sell it to an unknown company. Are you going to just build this and then sell it in the same manner?
We are that company. So, Ranger Solar, where I was previously as a developer, um, their whole job was to do the development, take it as close. development, take it as close to construction or to the commercial operation date as they could, and then find a long-term owner-operator with the market experience needed to kind of own and operate projects. That is Next Air Energy Resources. Next Air Energy Resources is, is the largest owner of solar and lean assets in the United States, and so we will continue to own it long-term. That'll be us.
Gary?
Yeah, thanks. It may be a relief to hear that I'm actually going to applaud you for something. And, and actually, it doesn't even need a response from you. I think it should be noted that you've found willing owners who want projects on their land and they have a right to that, and you've found a hundred acres of them in close proximity and you've got a site that is remarkably close to a substation. These are wonderful criteria and I think it's commendable from a corporate perspective that you've put all these assets together. And I don't want to denigrate the importance of that. And especially from a regional perspective, which is, to be honest, what you are looking at from the New England perspective, you've done an admirable job. I think it's pretty obvious to me that from the Randolph, much more parochial view, it's causes some problems because you've done so well. Because, and if I look at the people up there in the planning commission, then I'm wondering how are they gonna find other sites in Randolph that are gonna meet our needs for the near future, the next twenty years?
Yeah, it's hardly, hardly.
How are we gonna find other sites?
That's gonna be easy. They are hard.
And so I'm not saying this is your problem, I'm saying this is what, I have sympathy with the planning commission and our future planning, how we're gonna meet the needs if, if, are, if your best sites are already taken.
Okay, Gary, Brooke, Bill?
The Energy Committee did some studies of sites before we did the Community Solar and we had people coming to us with offers of land. Now, as a result of not meeting 2.0, they want the sites in places that the town chooses, not somebody else outside of the area, where they are largely hidden. I know of fifty acres of land that is totally hidden, fifty acres. Back to the point before on land values. On that same Community Solar project we did two years ago, we had to pay a nearby neighbor an additional amount because she was, she wouldn't let us build unless she got some additional compensation because she felt her land value would go, go down. I've done a fair amount of research and Chris Recky, I'm sure, has, has done more in, across the country, and in some areas, land values go up, some areas, land values go down. We don't know. We don't know. I don't think anybody knows.
Well, thank you, that's my answer. I, we don't know. If one buyer is concerned about a solar project, another one isn't necessarily, and so I don't have a firm, like, we see on average across the country a ten percent reduction in property Some of the rest of that seemed, seemed like more of a comment that, that I can't really address. We interconnect at really specific points on the high transmission and subtransmission grid, and so I can't just connect, there are certainly areas of, of real estate in Vermont and kind of around the region that are completely invisible, but they aren't necessarily near the, the high voltage transmission system. Some, some, some are and some aren't. I can't, I can't just connect into like the three-phase power line that runs down, you know, below. It has to be a very specific voltage.
And then down and press.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna stand. I was going for the forty-five day notice materials and it contained a cover letter that mentioned there were a couple of little tweaks to the project since the time of the original notice, we've had some updates. But when we go to what's being updated, which is the original letter by Ranger Solar dated April thirteenth, 2016, that's in the packet, and it's later updated with this new cover letter. The whole premise of the Ranger Solar project was that this was power that was going to be used in the state, in Vermont. And the entire presentation of Ranger Solar in 2016 was premised upon that. I quote from the first page of the April thirteenth, 2016 letter that says, at twenty, this is a final paragraph on the page, "At twenty megawatts, this renewable solar facility will provide a meaningful contribution towards helping Vermont and the region meet critical renewable energy standards and is consistent with the town of Randolph's stated energy goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and to quote, 'encourage the development of efficient local renewable energy sources and to reduce dependence on outside and foreign energy sources.'" Fair to say that that is gone, that is no longer a representation that your company can make because the benefit of the power or the RECs is not being enjoyed by Vermont, is correct?
The power and the RECs are being sold in Connecticut. We can't say that it goes towards meeting Vermont's greenhouse gas emissions. That information from 2016 is, is no longer up to date.
So, so in fact, you are no longer in compliance with this provision, at least that you previously referred to in 2016, that you are consistent with Randolph's stated energy goals to reduce the emissions, but also to encourage the development of efficient local renewable energy sources and to reduce dependence on outside and foreign energy sources.
Yep, so we, so we included that previous forty-five day notice from Ranger Solar just to like say, we, this is a project that's been around, we're reapplying now, but yeah, a lot of that information is, is not up to date.
Okay, but in your cover letter that said, oh, we have some updates, you, you didn't specifically say anything about we no longer are consistent with the town plan goals, right?
So that's, the, the updates that we're talking about, it's really when you're applying to this forty-five day, it's around really the site. And so when I was talking about, when we're talking about updates, it's around like, we've changed the location of an access road or, you know, areas like that, so that's what I was mentioning.
But really, the biggest update to convey to people via a forty-five day notice is to say, well, actually, everything we said in the letter that we've included here for you to read isn't true anymore, right? Because while you, you say you have some updates about where your access roads are gonna be, in fact, the biggest update and the biggest correction to your notification of what this project is gonna be about is the power's no longer in Vermont, no longer meets the town plan. And then further, as we go to page two, it says, additionally, the project is consistent with the Two Rivers Adacuiche Regional Planning Commission's regional plan, which encourages the development of renewable energy generation. So you're no longer in compliance with the town plan because you don't, you're not consistent with our energy goals there, and in fact, you're no longer consistent with the regional plan, but you didn't correct that and tell us that was an update, that you're no longer consistent with that, because how could you be if this has nothing to do with generating any renewable power for the state of Vermont or reaching our energy goals? Fair to say?
If you could reread the, the quote from Adacuiche-
Sure. Additionally, the project is consistent with the Two Rivers Adacuiche Regional Planning Commission's regional plan, that's the one that governs Randolph, which encourages the development of renewable energy generation.
We are still building a renewable energy generator. It's still a renewable energy generation plant, it's still meeting a regional need, which is part of the criteria for our certificate of public good. That's, that's what it is. I'm not, no part of me up here is qualifying that this project is going to meet Vermont's greenhouse gas emissions goals.
Okay, well, that brings me to my, that brings me to-
That's not what I thought would be the biggest change in that forty-five day notice. We're really talking about the site. I'm so sorry for that.
Well, the site plan is one thing, but whether you can comply with all the statutory criteria that the Public Utility Commission will be reviewing, and part of that process, it's absolutely necessary to hold developers' feet to the fire to make sure they're not making these representations or glossing over what the important points here are and whether or not they can comply with these criteria, is the fact that you, first of all, need to have in that process the towns involved and the public involved. And when you put a forty-five day notice out that says, oh, we're changing some access roads, but the very important heart of this case, which is the criteria and whether or not you can legally comply with them and your project that you're proposing hasn't been changed in some significant way since what your representations were that you could comply with the law, that to me is problematic because the people of this town have been told something in these materials and it has not been corrected by this little update cover letter of a page or two that you put in there. So what I'm trying to do here is just be very clear and understand at this point in time, through this hearing process, what the project is and whether or not the representations you previously made are or are not valid at this point. So now we know the town plan, this is not consistent with the town plan. The, the issue of regional plan, okay, you've been throwing away, throwing around the term regional tonight to talk about, well, it doesn't really matter what's going on in Vermont because we're reaching renewable energy goals for Connecticut and that's in the region. That's a term that you were using to describe basically new England, okay? Now, the Adacuiche planning document that refers to our region is a small segment, a grouping of towns within Vermont. When they talk about the regional plan and what's important for our regional plan in terms of renewable energy generation and reaching goals and why we want renewable energy projects cited here, that has nothing to do with the region of, of New England. That has to do with our grouping of towns, okay? That's what the Regional Planning Commission in Vermont. So I don't want people to be confused when you keep saying this is about what's great for the region. Frankly, we don't care what's great for the region. Why isn't Connecticut generating their own power on their own land in Connecticut? Well, I'll tell you why. Because it's a lot cheaper for you folks to come to Randolph, Vermont, talk with some farmers who have no background experience or knowledge in terms of what kind of monies that you are going to be generating from this particular project, which is in the tens of millions of dollars. They don't know that they're dealing with a Fortune 100 company or are you a Fortune 50 company?
Fortune 200.
200, okay, it was one of those.
Mr. Milky, are you aware of our position as a Fortune 200 company?
No.
But moving further in your representations, it says, further, Randolph Center Solar proposed project is on page two, it will generate local renewable solar power that will benefit Vermont and the region. Again, that's not true. The capacity output is forty separate 500 kilowatt net meter solar projects. As a single facility, the project arrays and associated electrical upgrades and road improvements will be consolidated in a single location rather than being scattered throughout Vermont. Because the project is offered to sell, the project's output is a qualified facility under the Public Service Board rules rates. The cost of the power will be significantly lower than the cost of power sold through net meter rates. All power produced by the project will be used in Vermont, and then it talks about de-commissioning of the project. So-
All of this is referencing the 2016 point.
No, which you didn't clear up or, or specify, all of this stuff that I argued about the town plan and the regional plan and the power being used in state and how great it is and, and hey, we're not, you're not gonna have a scatter of all these different smaller arrays around the state, we're gonna do it all in one thing and it's gonna be wonderful because we're gonna control this one site and we won't have them all over the place. None of that is true anymore, right?
So I would direct you on a lot of these legal questions, especially around like areas of regional need, that's an area that's defined by the, the PUC in their process. If you, if you really want to dig into the law about that, you should read, you should read the order from the PUC on our Coolidge Solar docket, which is a very similar project, which again is contracted through the same RFP that this one is and selling this project to Connecticut. We received our certificate of public good and, and areas of regional need and stuff are addressed in that order, and I think that, that the PUC's order on that project, though I can't say it, it, you know, is mirrored here or something, but I think that will get to your more legal questions, that I, I'm not really in a position to answer as a momentary.
I thought you were in a firm?
No, I went to Vermont Law School and did a master's in energy regulation.
Okay, well, in any event, thank you for the, for the reference. I practiced before the Public Utility Commission. So every single case is different and every single case depends on what kind of opposition exists by the town, by butters, by community groups or citizens groups that actually oppose the project. Because otherwise, frankly, often these projects are just rubber stamp projects. And that may be controversial for some of our people in this audience who may feel differently or think that the Public Service Department truly has a role in this in terms of fighting on behalf of the citizens. I do not believe that that is the case. I've worked there, but I have seen the Public Service Department actually hire experts that gave the same opinion or supportive opinion of the applicant. And when I have asked the Public Service Department, why are you doing this? You're supposed to be advocating for the public, not for the applicant, they say, oh, well, they're part of the public. And I don't agree with that, I think it's wrong, and so I have come to learn for a few years of practicing in this arena, that it is essential that a town and citizenry, if they are unhappy with this, if it is not right for their town, if they are dealing with a developer that is unwilling to acquiesce to the town's position about this, like Green Mountain Power Wood, who's in state utility, who has every reason to, to continue good relations with our towns because they are in state utility, their continued operation is very important and their, their relationships with people will be ongoing into the future. So they have the policy that if the town is not supportive of it, we go bye-bye and find another place. That is not the same case for an out-of-state developer who would care less. Which brings me to my next point, and this will be my last. We were asking questions about how much money you're making on this, you've talked about leases, you're asked about those, you're not gonna reveal how much money that people are getting on their leases, you haven't addressed, and just, and this is always the developers', you know, pat response when citizens or towns say, wait a minute, you talk about an economic benefit. Well, you're guessing at a number anyway, but somehow, you know, you don't know how it's calculated or how it's allocated between the state and what they throw to your town as a pittance or whatever this, you know, money is. Maybe we'll get eighty thousand dollars, maybe we won't, maybe we'll get nothing, who knows? But in fact, the diminution in value to the brand list for all of the properties that are gonna surround this, it will diminish the value. I, in the Middletown Springs case, tried to put on evidence in terms of what a Realtor believed would happen to some of the surrounding properties and that not only was there diminution in value to the properties, their properties would no longer be able to be sold curiously because nobody would be willing to move right next to only a five acre array, okay? So I think it's incumbent upon the town and the planning commission to truly delve into all of the financial aspects of this. If I become involved representing someone in this process when we file your petition, I will be serving discovery on how much money that you're making, how is this being financed, what kind of economic benefit is happening outside the state to the people who are actually investing in this. We understand that eighty-five percent of the costs of this project are able to be deducted by the investors of this within three years of the project. In the first year, they're given fifty percent of, of their investment, they get to write off. So there is huge money involved. And I have also been involved in having a landowner come to me, not on this project, but on some other project, because where the, the developer unwittingly allowed the, the lease hold to expire. And they got their CPG and then went, uh-oh, we no longer have a lease on the property, so they came back to the landowner. But at that point, it came to me and said, you signed this thing, it's gone now, now they have a CPG and they still want to do the project. And I said, well, let me look at it. And I was shocked at the pittance that was given to the, to these people for using their six acres, actually, it's their whole ten acres that they could, could no longer utilize. Because they had no idea the millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars that are being, that are being earned and, you know, that these investors are gaining from these projects to come into Vermont, rape our land, send the power out of state, and then they leave with all the money. And so we will be asking discovery questions on how much money are you paying these lease holders? Because all of these issues go to the economic benefit and that economic benefit to the state of Vermont- And that economic benefit to the state of Vermont cannot be measured unless there's context. And the context is if you're making, what was the number?
500 million.
500 million dollars from this project and you're paying a landowner 50 grand for this leasehold or whatever the number may be, it's astonishingly inadequate. And in fact, given the fact that there will be significant diminution in value to the brand list, 80 grand, in my opinion, if it even is that, is sorely lacking in terms of the economic benefit that should be, that should be bestowed upon a town that is permitting 100 acres of beautiful prime ag soils that is very important to our food security and to the survivability of our town and our farmers. So I'm kind of doing a shot over the top that all of these issues are very important and they will be delved into when, once we get to the petition stage. So I don't expect you to be able to comment on these and give us any numbers or information at this point, but I will strongly pursue these issues so that we can truly get a reading of what kind of economic benefit is there truly to the state or to the town, for example. You get 80 grand, but you lose how much on your brand list? Three times that? Thank you.
And we will be doing... I can, I can quickly commit, is Mr.... Next elect group meeting. When is it?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, probably. The one after that.
Yeah, the one after.
Second Thursday of each month.
Second Thursday. How about, probably not as tomorrow's meeting, but the one after that. How about we come with a specific proposal that says what our annual tax revenue to the town will be and then we'll... Tomorrow night, probably. The one after that.
Yeah, the one after.
The second Thursday of each month.
Second Thursday. How about, probably not as tomorrow's meeting, but the one after that. How about we come with a specific proposal that says what our annual tax revenue to the town will be and then we'll kind of restart the economic development package conversations that we've had before. So we can dig a little bit into those specifics that I'm not, I don't have right now. But I can certainly commit to that, definitely. Our power purchase agreement, at least a redacted portion of it, I'm not sure the pricing information is redacted or not, I think it probably is, but there is, these power purchase agreements have to get approved by the Connecticut authorities. And so you can actually go see our power purchase agreement on their website as well. I'm not sure what the document is, but...
If you had choosers, you'd just give it to us.
Bill Rice, I've got just two questions. How long has Ranger been in existence? This is my first question. And the second question is, will you be, I don't know what the life is of these panels, but will you be setting up a sinking fund or some decommissioning fund so that this will get restored?
Sure. So Ranger was the initial developer. Ranger no longer owns the asset. They don't have an ownership asset. They don't operate in New England at this point. This is a wholly owned subsidiary of Nextera Energy Resources.
How many years did Ranger exist?
Yeah, Nextera is, has existed in, it's, it's a parent company and includes like Florida Power and Light and...
How long have you been putting in solar panels?
We've been putting in solar panels for, for well over a decade largely in California. We were kind of first movers in large utility scale generation. We also own like Seabrook Nuclear and we have a merchant generation, merchant generation, which is like large carb plants.
So Ranger was a large company?
No, no, Nextera. Ranger is no longer operating...
I'm asking about Ranger because that's what you were.
They're not here. They're not here anymore.
Ranger started about three years ago. And they moved on to the Midwest.
Okay, that's the answer.
Yes, exactly. So Nextera, which actually owns this project, will build it and operate it, has decades of experience in pretty much every market in the United States, extensive experience here in New England. They used to own Run of the River Hydro in Maine. Green Mountain Power has been a customer. We do put a decommissioning bond on the project as part of the certificate of public good application, so there will be decommissioning funds available for the removal of the project at a later date.
Hey, thanks. Chris Rock, yeah. So all the benefits of the not in the public service, I can say. I don't agree that this should ever be considered to be a temporary thing. You guys need to think about this in terms of a permanent impact. And toward that end, I also don't, I mean, I've never condoned the idea of the decommissioning fund as well because I don't think it's ever decommissioned. I think we are evaluating something that needs to be dealt with on its merits as a permanent impact, much like a house, a condominium or anything else that's being developed. So I just want to relay that to you guys and ask that you think about it that way because there's no way, I mean, I did this with Kingdom Community Way and when they said this was going to be a, you know, a 40-year project, I'm like, "No, this is a permanent impact on the landscape. It's a permanent impact and likely to be recommissioned over time." So just think about it in the context of likely, you know, you've got these things here, it's going to be here, it's going to be here forever. Think of it like any other development as opposed to a temporary development, okay? Thank you.
And we will likely seek recommissioning. Certainly, once the end of our power purchase agreement is there, we will seek recommission if, if our landowners condone of it. What's nice about the restoration funds is that they're there should a situation occur. It's no longer economic. Yankee.
All the way to the vet.
Howard Corey, 867 East Bethel Road. I'm a radio amateur licensed by the Federal Communications Commission and they have a regulation, Part 15, that states that an incidental radiating device in the radio frequency spectrum will not cause harmful interference to a licensed service, which I am. Now, when you pass over on Central Street, there's a solar farm over there, which in my estimation is in violation to the Part 15 requirement because when I'm listening to WVMT on the passing by there, it completely wipes it out. There's another solar farm at the, in the back quarter of the VTC campus on Furnace Road, which when you drive by it, there's no reaction at all. And I stopped one day to find out why that might be. And of course, it's all in the converters. The, the solar panels generate DC, so there's no, no RF interference from that. But the converters are very, very, shall we say, dirty in order to get the efficiency over 90%, which if they use a sinusoidal converter, the maximum efficiency would be 60 to 65%. So the rest, the 30% more would have to be dissipated in heat. So I, I, I looked at the, the converters there and they said A, B, B. And in my estimation, that means Asaya Brown Bavari, which is a Swiss company which has, which generates, which builds shortwave broadcast transmitters. They made some beautiful ones for Voice of America and they also build nuclear power plants. So they're very, very knowledgeable in terms of radio frequency management. And of course, there's the price that you pay for the converters. And if you buy a low-cost converter that doesn't have adequate shielding or filtering, probably from China that's not vetted, then you're going to have, have interference problems. So it's, my, my main question on this is, will, will the converters that you use be vetted by the FCC or not? Or, or be comparable in some sort?
So we're down to two inverter choices and, and I can't remember which one we are, we are submitting with our interconnection request. It's either T-Mike, which is a company, I think it's South Korea, or General Electric, which we have a larger partnership. They, they will also do our inverters. So it's one of those two and I can get you, do you have an email, Mr. Corey?
Do I have what?
An email address?
No, I don't.
Okay. I can probably get you something, I can come up like maybe next week and drop you off a spec sheet. Would that be helpful of the inverter we're going to use? And you can look at the technical requirements and...
Yeah.
A lot of this is beyond me and we've talked about it before. And if, if maybe I can stop by your house and take good notes, I can follow up with some of our experts and actually get you good information. I've been meaning to get it to you for like a year and a lot of it I just, is engineering talk that's a little beyond me, but I can get you definitely a spec sheet for those inverters, I'm sure. Dan, do we address this in our sound studies at all? Do you know?
We might when we do the sound study, if that's possible.
So if, if, when we have a sound study for you, which we will again before our certificate of public good, I'll, I'll give you a draft of our sound study and you can take a look at that too. And if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to work with you to address them.
The main interest is, is it, will it be vetted by the FCC? And on anything that they, that they approve to, to be in compliance with Part 15 is like a little sticker on there. It's white with black lettering and it says F, C, and it's concentric Cs and it says Part 15 compliant. If they've been, if they've vetted it. And UL designation doesn't, doesn't come into play with this at all. It has to be, it has to be vetted by the FCC.
Okay. I'll try to get you as much information as possible by next week.
Oh.
Maybe we, we can talk after and maybe it'll come up and then we'll just work through it.
Is this a 20, 20 megawatt?
Megawatt.
20, not two.
Not two.
20, 20 megawatts.
How many inverters? Dan, do you...
I don't know.
We can get you the inverters as well.
So you're not going to use like one large inverter? You're going to have inverters for each panel?
Not for each panel. There's, there'll be a block of about two and a half megawatts or so that each has a centralized inverter.
So each inverter will handle two and a half?
Or 13, but I can get you that number and I can probably get you their locations too.
Two and a half megawatts per converter?
Per central inverter. And that, I can get you these specs and we can talk about it and I'll also get you the location.
And there's another major concern I'm, I have about the power reliability in that area off of the, off of, off of the Randolph Center substation is extremely reliable. We almost never have any outages. And I'm kind of wondering if that might be upset by the backfeeding. Is, is all of your output, your 20 megawatts going to go through that station? Or are they going to have to build a parallel station?
Well, we build, I'm not sure exactly what the name of the equipment is for our, our collection and then we, we build the point of interconnection. And there are, there are protections against backfeed. All of those studies are performed directly by Green Mountain Power and it goes through the ISO New England process so that all of those impacts, they model it out on the grid, our voltages, our thermal, our thermal issues that we cause on distribution systems. What is that impact? And then we, we have to, if there's new equipment that needs to go in to fix that, to ensure the stability and reliability, then, then, then we install. That's, that all, that's all fleshed out in our, our interconnection studies.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd hate to have our reliability degraded. I might have to buy a generator.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. So Winston's got a question.
Um, Mr. Winston, sorry. And concerned about companies that have come here and would like to do business. For example, at one of the meetings we had with Ranger Solar, I raised some questions and they couldn't tell me where their offices was in Manhattan. And I guess they were sort of embarrassed and had a young lady there supposedly with the lawyers and she handed me a business card. It was a home address, the cell phone number. So Ranger Solar, in my opinion, never really existed. It was shandy, if you recall that.
So, oh, sorry.
However, if a new era has taken over the assets of Ranger Solar, I'm curious to know, are you listed in the New York Stock Exchange or not?
Yep.
You are. Do you have a Dun &amp; Bradstreet rating?
Do we have a what?
Dun &amp; Bradstreet rating.
Is that a credit rating?
Yes. Yes, a credit rating.
Yeah, we do have a credit rating. I'm not exactly sure it's, it's like utility quality credit rating. You can look it up.
This is a thing that concerns, concerns many of the people here. And if you're dealing with a town, I think it would also concern the town that deals with a reputable company. Secondly, do you have any operating plants in Vermont?
We will by the end of this year.
No, no, no. You have any operating now?
No. We will by the end of this year. One's going into construction.
So you have no operating plants, but you have a fault which is the grinner. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good. Now, the other plans, how many plans you plan to build here as well? Five, five or so?
We have five 20-megawatt, four 20-megawatt projects and one 15-megawatt.
So when you add all up, you have 100 megawatts of power?
Yeah.
How are you going to do with all this power?
It goes into the grid.
Of course, you have a lot of power. If the Senate failed, must it be?
Yeah, it goes, well, power goes into the, the transmission grid and from there it distributes, you know, following kind of like the least path of resistance. And so as soon as it gets into the grid, it kind of is distributed everywhere. It's like, it's like hydro...
I have an impression that you're going to send it to the...
Yes, yeah.
100 million.
I'm sorry?
You're going to produce it with 100 million megawatts?
How many megawatts? I think we had it in our greenhouse gas emission report.
I think it was 37, it was 37,000 megawatt hours annually.
Annual, yeah. Right. So those 37,000 megawatt hours annually will go onto the grid and then it disperses. It's not dissimilar to Seabrook Nuclear. The, the entire grid kind of functions because there isn't a lot of storage on the grid, like it is, it is produced and consumed at, at the same time. And it, and it's done that on, on kind of a regional level. So, so that's where the power goes. It just, it goes onto the grid and they do the studies on how it, how it distributes itself.
Well, I'm not too sure about that. It's a debate of the thing. The other question is that custody of the environment. I would imagine that you've put fences around these, these projects in the, is better, in this one? Have you ever concerned the migration of the animals that you have there? Dogs and deer and foxes and fishers?
Yeah, definitely.
Eventually, it's going to be a block, environmental block.
So we actually use fencing, it's sort of, it's called wildlife type fencing. It has larger gaps in the bottom. And so we actually have spec of fence, but we don't use a standard, you know, chain link, chain link fence. It's actually a wildlife, allows wildlife to pass through. It's got larger, larger...
Jump over.
Smaller than large, smaller wildlife, but yeah, I mean, it allows, allows for, for wildlife to pass through.
What happens to them?
So we have, we have specs of the fence. I know we can dig those out. Yeah, and that's, it's like a requirement for us in permitting initiatives. So I want to adjust first the Ranger Solar thing. We all worked remotely, so we had no distinct office, but we were still a, a real company. We just, we just didn't have an office specifically. We had, our, our president worked in Brooklyn, New York. Our permitting director worked in Yarmouth, Maine. And that was generally our address because of permitting materials, we built Yarmouth. And then like I lived in Bristol, Vermont for a while and we had a guy in Burlington and we just, we just didn't need an office. But now we have, I mean, our, our headquarters at Nextera is at 700 University Boulevard and you can find our locations.
Yeah, that is something I find unacceptable. You want to do something, move on, go to the center and you don't have an office.
They do now. It didn't now. Ranger Solar was a little different. This is not Ranger anymore.
No, it's been a Ranger. This is the office.
Right, and we didn't really, I mean, internet allows remote work.
I don't have an office in Maine.
Nextera's main office is in, is in Juneau Beach, Florida. It's at 700 University Boulevard and that's publicly available information. I got to look deep down there.
What about financing? How are you going to raise this?
We do, we do, we have relationships with like the largest banks in the country. We do a lot of financing. We have Morgan Stanley, Goldman Sachs. We generally finance multiple projects at once. We'll do like a hundred million dollar financing where we, where we pool together a bunch of projects and go with it.
Have any plans, just at some point, you might go bankrupt, what happens to the projects there? Move up and things of that kind?
Yeah, again, if... Yeah, again, if restoration bonds are, are put into place, we have provisions in our lease agreements that cover bankruptcy and, and transitions. Companies like, like Sun Edison was a large solar company that did go bankrupt. And all of those assets are still, uh, in operation. They, they, they go into like, uh, banks have liens on them, they sell them to new customers and they manage them the whole time. So all Sun Edison's existing projects have been started and owned. The vast majority of them just stayed in operation. There's just covenants in place to come back. Yep.
So, hi.
Hi, Harry, take the floor.
Okay, so I, I, so I just got one other question. I appreciate everybody for all your questions. I think they're, they're great and I think we're learning a lot here. So my question is, if there was another space or another location in the community that wasn't much further from the substation, is that something you folks might consider?
I would have to see it on a map. Actually, we'd have to do our due diligence.
Fair enough.
We would have to look, um, we're actually certainly, in theory, I guess, would be able to. I don't think that would be kind of wrong of us to do, especially to the landowners we're working with or we have commitments with.
Right.
But, uh, there's nothing precluding, you know, a site from.
Well, just to, just to piggyback off that, uh, you know, one of, one of the thoughts was, um, or one of the questions that I had was, um, whether the Pleasant Street, uh, substation was ever looked at as a possible tie-in, um, given that it has thirteen thousand kilowatts of capacity remaining compared to fifty seven hundred kilowatts of capacity remaining on the Crocker East Bethel Road substation. Um, and from, um, just a quick measurement, um, we are about a hundred and fifty meters difference between, between the property, the, your furthest, your southernmost property in East Bethel Road to your substation versus, um, and then that.
Is the substation across the road here? Across eighty-nine?
Yeah, it's not across eighty-nine.
Oh, no, 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 I, oh, well, our substation's on East Bethel. Well, I thought you meant the other.
So what, what, I think what we're, we're trying to get to is, um, there's, there may be other locations that would be more suitable for solar than prime ag land. And, um, such as a landfill. And, um, in that scenario, there is, uh, a sub, the substation is only a hundred and fifty meters further if, if solar was to be located on a landfill.
I disagree.
So.
I don't think it is appropriate for the town to negotiate.
No, it's just.
This, this sounds like the beginning of something that you could be doing to negotiate with them in the same discussion where the town is fighting the one that is already in the process.
All I asked was the question that they considered other locations because people had asked.
Right, I, and that part, that part's appropriate. It's the part where we're starting to discuss a specific place that the town owns that still has issues with visibility coming up from Bethel, et cetera, et cetera. We're, we've got the same exact issues there except for that the town owns that one rather than, uh, public, eh, rather than specific taxpayers.
So I'm asking the question of, has there, has there been another location such as, uh, a landfill that would not hinder the use of ag land? That's the question.
Okay, so I guess just to, I'm sorry I'm interrupting here. My other feeling there is that there is not as big an issue with ag land as what has been brought up in this meeting before. Um, as, as one of the landowners that is involved in this project, I can flat out say to you, we have never had, uh, farmers come to us and say, uh, I'd like to be able to use your land next year because I can't find something else. Would you be willing to consider a contract with me next year? There's no bidding wars for ag land. Where?
I mean, I can say your company.
There's never been a, a bidding war in, on that portion of East Bethel Road that I am aware of.
Okay, well, we can move on from that. We can move on from that. I have a couple.
Do you mind if I completely address your comments there? So, so our site selection process and anytime we do this is rigorous, it's exhaustive and it takes a long time. There are really only certain sites that are, that are suitable for this in the amount of land plus proximity to that transmission infrastructure. Um, and so I haven't looked at this other site personally. Uh, in random, there is another site, I'm happy to discuss it, obviously. Um, but we really apply a rigorous multi-year approach to choosing our sites and there's a reason why this site is kind of one of the strongest utility scale solar sites in Vermont. Um, it's really land availability plus transmission availability. The two don't necessarily. Anytime we're developing on things like landfills and brownfields, we, we, we participate in a, in a competitive environment. Uh, we don't have like guaranteed returns like net metering. There's no, there's no specific thing. We participate in the bidding process. And so if I'm in an RFP on a landfill site that's ballasted, um, it triggers, you know, uh, federal NEPA review and needs an environmental impact statement, all of a sudden my costs are not competitive with, you know, the, the St. Albarn facility that we have in, in. You know what I mean? So we're open to considering it, but it, it requires like different, uh, financial support to build a landfill.
Just was curious though, you go here.
Sure, sure.
Can I just do a follow-up?
It's the substation, that's how we write, the substation.
I just wanna do a follow-up to that. You're saying we did a rigorous exhaustive search of this. Are you talking about Ranger Solar or have you guys done something in the interim to look at alternative sites, for example, which is something that is incumbent upon you, for example, in demonstrating that you have done reasonable mitigation for aesthetics purposes and that kind of thing? So, A, what kind of rigorous exhaustive search has been done by your current company about this particular site and what alternative sites have you looked at?
Sure, so Ranger did the initial outreach and I say we and sometimes, I'm sorry, it's been confusing that I was at Ranger and now I'm at Nextera. But Ranger did exhaustive studies to find sites in Vermont and found Randolph Center. Um, that, you know, now I'm in charge of finding new sites for Nextera Energy Resources and I'm constantly applying the same logic that we applied at Ranger plus, um, some additional stuff around transmission in my position at Nextera Energy Resources. And I can say that post Ranger, I have again reviewed all of Vermont and Randolph Center is still one of the strongest utility scale solar projects, um, in the state.
What alternative sites? What alternative sites in Randolph have you looked at to determine whether there's something nearby that doesn't impact on whatever criteria that are going to be in that? Where's the location and where are?
So we choose, when, when I'm doing this, when anybody's doing this, uh, we take a look at, okay, first, first criteria is I need a point of interconnection. I need to be able to interconnect to the grid. And the best place to do that in Randolph, if I could look more into the substation you were talking about, but the best place to do it is at Randolph Center, uh, around our East Bethel Road substation. And then I'll do like a proximity of like a multi-mile radius around it of like, okay. Um, what are the, the parcels that could be suitable for solar? And then I run wetlands layers, I run all sorts of natural resource layers. And then we do pretty much a year of entire due diligence before we, we even bid it into an RFP or prepare to bring it out publicly. Um, a lot of sites get scratched pretty early, like, okay, that looked viable initially and it's, it isn't really. Um, through that vetting process of us looking at hundreds of parcels within just proximity to this important viable point of interconnection, we narrowed it down to these are the sites that, these are the parcels that can, can house solar, can do this. There's no conservation easements on this property, it has the right topography. Uh, there aren't any sensitive natural resource areas like wetlands and groundwater pools that we have to impact, we can step back from them, uh, things like that.
Alright, so you, this was narrowing to, and you found your site. You didn't pick five and, and compare the relative.
This is a viable site.
You didn't compare the relative merits of sites and maybe choose which we do. You just.
I'm sure we did that very early. Um, one of my colleagues was in, in charge of, of coming and leasing land and, and finding landowners who were interested in participating. And I'm sure she contacted more landowners than just, uh, those that we have under option now.
You said you've looked within miles, is it like two miles or ten miles or a hundred miles?
Typically, I like to stay within two miles.
That's why you didn't look at downtown.
Yeah, so if, if we're really, if we're far away from a point of interconnection, that means I need to find easements and run a transmission line back to that substation. We would prefer from a, just a grid planning reason, you wanna be as close to a point of interconnection as you possibly can, preferably adjacent where that's possible. So I would look at no more, two miles is really, that's, I don't wanna be much further than that and I don't really look beyond three. From that's one of them.
The substation that you're proposing to connect to, is it adequate to handle the power you're gonna generate? Or is that gonna have to be enlarged significantly?
Um, it will not have to be enlarged significantly. So we will have to add, and you can actually depict, it's depicted here on our, on our plans exactly what new infrastructure we need to put there. Um, it all fits on the existing parcel. It'll just be a smaller area just outside the existing fence line, um, that we will need to build.
So it will be enlarged?
Yes, but not significantly. It's not likely we'll build a new substation.
Marjorie Ryerson, your plant, your company is planning approximately a hundred megawatts of solar arrays across the state of Vermont. What are you going to do to keep the growth down around the panels in each of those, including the Randolph Center one?
So we mow a couple times a year. Um, it's all mechanical vegetative management. We don't use pesticides, um, or things like that. We're also.
No chemicals?
Uh, no, no, it's not in our plan. Um, we're also open to things like, uh, um, sheep, um, pollinator species, we're, we're open to it. We like the pollinator friendly solar, um, things that, that Rev, when we have energy Vermont is leading. And we have, uh, facilities in other states that, that have just kind of wildflowers across them. Um, it's, it's site-specific. Um, and we need to talk with Agency of Natural Resources around what's the appropriate seed mix. Uh, but we're open to things like that. Um, if we could buy a sheep, sheep burner, then we can use sheep to do the vegetative management.
When Ranger Solar was looking at Randolph Center, they were going to sell it immediately after getting it all operable. So there was no ability for the town to determine whether or not chemicals would be used on farmland because nobody knew who the next owner was. You're saying you would save the next owner and there would be no chemical supplied to farmland?
Yeah, Ranger Solar successfully sold the assets earlier than they were initially expecting. We got our PPAs and, and, and we sold. Um, and Nextera Energy Resources is that long-term owner operator. And so Nextera, uh, me, um, we can make more commitments on exactly what that operation and maintenance plan looked like and how that can fit into, into Randolph. We're, we're in that position that Ranger was not.
And you'll include that in retiring to the PUC so it'll be binding?
Yeah, we can actually set it up beforehand too in conversations with the town. If there are certain restrictions that the town wants or, you know, we want pollinators, we will certainly explore it, make sure it's feasible and, and do that prior to our permitting.
But that's not something you have planned to have in your permit, that you won't use chemicals?
I think that's.
Who is that?
I don't know if it's specifically said, it's just not corporate, we just need to mow. We don't, we don't need to kill anything, uh, with chemicals really. Um, it's something that I think we would be happy to talk about restriction. I, I need to follow up with our operations and maintenance team, but I think that's something you can.
So when you represented Ranger Solar, when we asked that question, you said, oh, well, we'll whack the property. But you, that was not accurate because you weren't even going to be controlling the property. You were gonna sell it to somebody else.
So it's pretty standard that it's, it's pretty much just mow. Um, and so Ranger, and I can remember him saying in here, that's, that's what we were gonna, that's just kind of standard operating procedure. What we couldn't commit to is things like.
Hundred and fifty acres, whatever you're gonna be clearing?
Yeah, we'll do mow, uh, they'll be out there mowing. But we couldn't make specific commitments around things like pollinator species and, and stuff like that. But now we're in a position to, to really talk with Randolph about that long-term operations and maintenance. We can do that. Happy to.
Yes, I, I had a question.
Yeah.
And you probably won't be able to answer it. I'm sure you'll be coming to see us because you need easement rights, I think. I don't know, it's something to do with, uh, I'm deal ownership, by the way. And we do have the property that we, we, we all, we canceled out, you remember all that. Um, we never gave you permission to go on our land. You, you wanted it, but we didn't. So now I wanna know, how does this work with this new project going through? Because the poles are on our land and, and whether you make a road, I mean, you, you need to, I guess we need legal representation for this or how does this work?
Yeah, we'll definitely be talking to you specifically. Again, our first conversation needs to be, can we work with Green Mountain Power on their existing poles? Cause that's preferable than us building a whole new.
Right, they have right, right way on their poles, but you can't build any, any other things. You have to work up, right, on their poles?
Which we're gonna do, yeah, yeah.
You can't build anything on a property's roads or anything, right?
Yes, as far as I know, the, the first thing I need.
As far as you know, that these are things that you will have for us when you.
Yeah, absolutely, and I have to have.
Because we're not gonna give you permission, so you may have to work around that. I just want to let you know that I am not an advocate of this big, big project, so per se. You know, maybe something smaller, you know, fifteen acres, ten acres, whatever. I think this is too large in that particular area, so, okay.
Sure, let me, let me iron out the details a little bit more.
Because we will be meeting and we will be butting heads, I can see that.
And our alternative route, we have other alternative routes. One of the best ones is probably going down the road and burying if we can. This is something we talked about with Mel Adams previously and, and was part of our initial, uh, design. And we can talk about that with the town afterwards. But we're hoping that we just.
I think we all have rights, advocates and non-advocates. So that's why I had to kind of speak up and I'm very curious about how this is gonna play.
We'll definitely be coming by and see.
Okay.
Sandy?
Hi, Sandy Andres, with the head of Randolph. I'm hoping that Jonathan, you, you see here, can just lay out a brief, briefly, uh, timeline. You're gonna be filing the certificate of public good within a certain number of days. The PUC and the Select Board have the option of applying for intervenor status. It is reviewed, but the town has little to say so, it is more energy, you know, energy. So can somebody just lay out briefly that's the escape and timeline?
We do have a.
It's, it's not, it doesn't need.
Oh, right, right, right. We're, we do.
You don't get that, that preference.
Maybe, maybe the Public Service Department, partners, it's, it's.
So first, I think, we filed our forty-five day notice here this month in April. And that's, that's, if, for instance, we haven't filed our Davenport Solar Docket, which is our one in Brandon, and we, we put in our forty-five day notice. So what we're doing here is restarting this conversation. We think we will be ready to submit our certificate of public good application on our side, all of our materials in order, um, likely in like June. Yep, but that, that's, we don't have a firm date. We don't have to just be like, you know, June eighteenth, we have to have this in permit. Um, so we're hoping this conversation can help educate when that docket begins.
So Jonathan, how much are we able to find that?
I.
So technically, products of soil is primed, it was created by.
Um, do you mind, Tom, if we let Stephanie actually address the scheduling question first and then we'll?
Well, I'm Steph Hoffman, I'm an attorney at the Public Service Department. And so after the petition is filed, there's a schedule that will be established by the Public Utility Commission. And the way that process works is the petition is posted now to an electronic filing system called EPUC. And there is a timeline initially established for people to get involved in that proceeding. And then there's an even further opportunity for intervention. The way intervention works is there's a list of, um, different named parties under the statute and under the, the rules that by, by just applying for intervention are automatically given that status. And then there are other permissible forms of intervention that people can apply for. So if you have an interest in, in applying for intervention, you don't necessarily need to be a named statutory party. You can apply for that intervention status and the PUC makes a determination about who all the intervenors are. Once everyone is brought into the proceeding, then the schedule will be established. It includes several rounds of discovery, both written and sometimes written communications from the commission to the petitioner, for example. The filing of sometimes even additional testimony. And then testimony by intervenors, the department, um, the experts that we retain in these proceedings and anyone else's experts that are retained by intervening parties. And then there's a discovery phase on all of that. And then there's a discovery phase on all of that non-petitioner testimony. So they can, the petitioner can ask questions of the department and of any intervenors. After all that discovery process is conducted, which also I, I'd like to mention includes a site visit. As Jonathan mentioned, it's usually a formal site visit as part of that proceeding where members of the commission come out to the site and all the intervenors walk. where members of the commission come out to the site, and all the intervenors walk the site, and sometimes go to various locations in the community and viewpoints, et cetera. Then after all of that process concludes, the commission holds evidentiary hearings at the end of it, where they take all the testimony that's been filed, and then people can ask questions of those witnesses, interveners can ask questions of the witnesses, the commission can ask questions of the witnesses, and then that record is transcribed by a court stenographer, a transcript is made, and then everyone who's part of the case has the right to write a legal brief. And you have to be a lawyer to do that, you can write your arguments in narrative form and submit them to the commission to be considered as part of the final decision. But the way that decision is generated is the commission issues a proposal for decision, the parties can all comment on that proposal for decision, and then they take it under advisement and they issue a final decision, either granting the certificate for public, the certificate of public good with conditions as a result of the proceeding, or rejecting it. And that determines, that's the permit that everyone refers to the project having or not.
How do we apply for a good intervention?
Stephanie, could you just specify how many solar projects in Vermont, to your knowledge, have ever been denied by the Public Utility Commission?
Recently, there've been several net metering projects that were denied.
Like less than 10?
Yeah, I would say probably less than 10 of this size, but that's rather complicated now by the fact that with the rule change under net metering, a series of projects that had applied for extensions have now been denied, which functionally prohibits them from being constructed, and so if I took that into consideration with your questions, probably more than several dozen at this point.
Okay, versus how many have been approved?
Just for clarification, net metering only pertains to arrays up to...
500 kW.
Yeah, so, different sizes.
Yes, but the letting process for a project of this size and the number of projects of greater than 500 kW is far lower in Vermont at this point. So as a percentage of those projects, yes, it's around 100% approval for larger projects.
Just to follow up a question to that, my understanding is that currently the largest array in Vermont is just shy of 5 MW, right? And that is regulated under standard offer?
Standard offer is an off-tee, that's your PPA, but it's the same statute that governs this.
Yeah, so, has there ever been a array that has captured, that has been regulated, or where PURPA has been in play in Vermont? Has there ever been...
PURPA's still not in play.
Still not?
This is not a PURPA project, it's not as...
Okay, all right, that answers one question.
Yep, PURPA was Ranger's plan, that plan is dead, it was that 2016 45-day notice, and we included informationally, that's no longer in the...
Okay.
Not as PURPA QF. Yep.
I think someone in the back did ask how you intervene, and I just wanted to address that, my news is probably important for everyone here. So there, if you use the electronic system, there are actually forms that are on the commission's website that give you instructions, it's just a one or two-page document where you fill out kind of your contact information and what your interest is, there's like a box for you to fill out what your interest in the cases, and how you're associated with the project, are you a neighbor, are you the town plan, you know, what is your relationship? If you do not have email or internet access, you can also contact the commission via a letter sent in the mail to let them know you're interested, and then they can mail you out the forms that you need to fill out as well. And as an attorney at the Public Service Department, I often hear from people who are trying to get involved in a case, and so I'm also happy to give people contact information, send you things, whatever is necessary to help you get connected with those resources.
For me, I just like to ask Stephanie a follow-up question while we're doing the process, because when I read your materials online, and I'm sorry I don't have them in front of me, it seemed to indicate that there's a process for the town, once they submit their 45-day notice, which I understand you did, it said that the town had 40 days to respond.
That's one of the reasons why they're hosting this meeting.
But the response being just having a town meeting, or they have to respond to the PUC? That's why, I was not clear on what the town needs to do in the immediate term, because you're saying you're not planning on filing for maybe till June, but it seems, what is the 40-day process that is talked about in the letter, that the town has to respond by?
I'll get C to explain for you.
So the process for providing comments during that period is just a timeline that's established, it does not foreclose the town entities from intervening in the actual proceeding and participating and giving comments, or hiring experts, or doing whatever it is that they might want to do during the actual presentation of the petition. Frankly, that period of time is meant for the petitioner to get feedback from towns and other interested stakeholders, such that they can make changes to their proposal before it gets submitted as a petition to the Public Utility Commission, because once that petition goes into the commission, different rules guide any changes that are made to that petition at that point. So changes that are made between the notice period and the filing of the petition based on feedback that's received from the town, which is more informal even, sometimes it's phone calls and sometimes it's discussions, those changes are governed by one set of rules that dictates then what has to be submitted to the commission, and if a new notice needs to issue, or something of that nature. But once a petition is filed, if the project decided, "We're moving this, and we're moving it over here," well, they'd have to pretty much start over again with the entire process. So that's really what the period that's designated, you have to allow 45 days for people to get that material and respond to it by statute, meaning you can't say, "We're going to file our petition in 10 days." It's a minimum for the petitioner to allow for people to give feedback.
To respond to them. It's not that the town has to give any feedback to the PUC, that process doesn't start until the official proceedings, and then their only way of doing that is as an intervener? Is that correct, from the town then?
Sometimes towns and frankly, folks in the community file public comments as well, which is another method of engaging the process without filing for intervener status, there's actually a link right on every docket's webpage to make a public comment, so it's another way to give feedback to the Public Utility Commission without having to engage the process as an intervener. But the period for the advanced notice, the local 45-day notice, is a minimum period of notice you're giving everyone who is in the vicinity of the project and all the statutory parties, that gives them 45 days to review the materials before the petitioner can file with the commission. So you couldn't file before the 45 days is up, and then you have an end date when you have to file by, or else you'd have to re-notice the project.
Okay, and it did also, as I recall, say something about the, so, maybe this is what you were saying, if there are significant changes, it did say that the town, in the notice that you sent out, says the town may only raise issues relevant to those significant changes. So that's what I, that's why it seemed to me that they were filing something with the PUC. Is that not correct? I didn't play, do you know what I'm referring to in your letter?
Yeah, I get what you're saying, I'm actually, I'm actually unclear whether the town has to, has to...
Respond to the PUC, or the town, okay, so it sounds like there is some confusion.
They have the right to file comments with the commission during the 45-day notice period, as does anyone.
Okay.
However, it is not required, and it is not a placeholder to make sure that you're at the table when the proceeding starts and the filing of the petition.
But they would be official comments, if the town were to submit it within that period, are they official comments to the PUC, that the PUC then...
They can still raise those same issues, even if they didn't put in those comments during my 45-day notice period, they can still raise those issues once the docket begins.
Only as interveners then though, or...
There are towns that just file letters indicating this is our position on this case, but we're not hoping to intervene.
Yeah.
That actually happens quite frequently, for many reasons. So this...
Stephanie, what's the deadline for that?
For the filing of formal comments during the petition process?
Yes.
So there is a set deadline that the commission establishes at the beginning of the docket for intervention of all statutory and non-statutory parties.
So what's the deadline, I'm sorry, what's the deadline for us to submit the issues that were raised at this meeting since the 45-day notice?
You typically don't have to submit comments before they file their petition.
Is there a deadline for us to respond now, before they file?
There is no deadline with the commission.
Yeah, but Stephanie, so, but normally, the town planning commission has to get their comments to the applicant by the 40th day of that 45-day period. Now, this particular proceeding was agreed to by the applicant, the town, and the department, Jeff Commons, I know you're pitching for him. They agreed to delay because the planning commission realized they were coming up on that 40th day very quickly, and so they set a hearing going a couple days' notice. And then in conversations with the applicant, it was agreed that it would just be delayed a couple weeks. So we are already outside the 45-day period, but that's by agreement of the parties. So I think what's now decided is some guidance on, so we're having this meeting and hearing, how long does the planning commission have to provide this information to the applicant, which ultimately the applicant explains what they received for comments from the town, the planning commission, and how they responded. I mean, that information gets sent ultimately to the Public Utility Commission, but is, I guess at this point, since we're already outside that time period, it would make the most sense for maybe the planning commission and the applicant or the department to agree, you know, why doesn't the PUC get their comments from the applicant by two weeks, three hours, something like that. They should probably set a deadline at this point.
Well, the purpose of that deadline is so that if they're going to file, let's say on June 1st, and you do want to make comments that you want included because they have an obligation under the rules of the statute to report those comments, that deadline is meant to facilitate those comments being incorporated in the application that goes to the commission, not to create an artificial barrier for the planning commission.
But when is that deadline?
It's that, okay, yeah, that makes it clear, that it's that they have a responsibility.
It's a deadline that now, I think, you can agree before they file their petition to get them the comments, it's not an official deadline at this point, because everyone came together and said this meeting could take place after the 40th day, so...
We'll certainly respect it, whatever your timeline is.
Because if you're not going to file till June, I mean, because yeah, that seems like it would put us under, oh, you gotta hurry up, you gotta hurry up, because there's a 40-day limit time by which he has to submit, accept our comments. So there is a hard and fast deadline by which he has to submit, he has to accept our comments and incorporate it into their permit. It sounds like what you're saying, and so right now, we're hearing they're not planning on submitting it till June, probably.
Yeah, again, that 45-day notice was a minimum, it's a notice, notice that says that anytime after 45 days, I can file a notice. If you guys have...
But your letter says that if we do not, if the town does not express concerns about particular pieces by that 40 days, under that 40-day requirement, the town is precluded from bringing those issues up, unless they've expanded, unless you've expanded the scope at some point, is what I recall.
Yeah, the truth of the matter is, as a developer, as a builder, you file and you hold your breath, and you hope that 57 people don't intervene. And you get past that deadline, and you go, phew, and then you move forward.
But this is a little something different, this isn't...
No, this is exactly the same thing, is there are deadlines, and we need to be careful that there is statute that gives these guys rules to play within, I have rules to play within, and the community has rules to play within. I command the planning commission to understand your role.
And that's all we're trying to do is seek clarification.
And the town manager, and all the citizens, understand what's going on here.
That's all we're trying to do, is seek clarification of what the rules actually call for.
Clarification is listed on websites, and I don't think they're as squishy as people are kind of making them up to be in this room, because that has not been my experience as a builder.
The town should certainly check with their legal counsel and have them review all this, and communicate with us often, so that we are not setting a timeline that's too fast for you to review, because we don't want to do that. I've already committed to, if we can get on the agenda, tomorrow's select board meeting with the one after, we're going to present some tax and economic information, we'll do the same with you guys, happy to attend more meetings of these things.
I have one more procedural question.
Question?
Quick, I think it's quick. It seems like this is within the intent of the 45-day period, even though it's a little past, and the intent is to get feedback to the potential applicant, not really to the planning commission, I think, as I understand it. And so, haven't we already done that? I hate to create a whole much more work for the planning commission to have to package all this that they've heard tonight into something that they feed back to, Jonathan has already heard it. So doesn't this count as part of the town's feedback?
I think that's a legal question, he's giving us a jury.
And I think the potential answer is here, maybe.
Let me just take a stab at it, okay? First of all, to the point about squishy deadlines, the Public Utility Commission is anything but squishy deadlines. Once this petition is filed, and we get into, your pre-file testimonies do this Monday, responses to that pre-file testimony, and any objections, so do the next Monday. For a person like myself who practices along a lot of different venues, it is very difficult. I cannot take more than one PUC case at any one point in time because of the onerous deadlines, and if you miss them, tough. You show up in a hearing, you want to make an evidentiary objection, if you didn't make some, you know, objection in writing like three months beforehand, they ask you, "Do you object?" You say yes, and they say, "Too bad, you can't object." And I say, "Well then, why did you ask me if I can object?" So it is very, very structured, you miss a deadline, forget about it. If you don't have a lawyer, forget about it, you will be drifting at sea. But this particular process, which is normally governed by a 45-day notice period, that's the minimum, as Jonathan has explained, by the 40th day, the planning commission must already have held a public meeting to acquire public input, so that they can figure out what position they're going to take, and what issues that they want addressed, if any, or questions answered, if any, from the applicant. All of this back and forth in the 45-day period, in that past, well, in the 40-day period, because the planning commission normally has to say, "This is all the information, it's our position, this, this is what people say, answer these questions." All of that stuff needs to be given to Jonathan by the 40th day, normal. Now, because the planning commission set a hearing, that was not a convenient notice because it was only a few days, but they were complying with the statute, and they could have held their hearing, and Jonathan was somewhere else, like we all have lives and things. So everybody agreed, Jonathan, planning commission, and the Public Service Department, who are the players here, people with power, agreed, "Don't worry about the 45-day period." Jonathan's company wanted to do outreach, meet the select board, talk to the butters, do a number of things to reach out to the community and to talk. So they were like, "Fine, don't worry about the 45-day period, we all agree to go past that deadline, and then we will come do the same process, it's just not going to be governed by those same strict timelines." So, planning commission, listen to what everybody says, sorry, but it's your job to then tell this company what you think about it, because you are the people that this board is empowered to have standing in this process, where you don't have to go through the same arduous demonstration that, "I'm in a butter, or I'm going to be affected by this, and this is the criteria that's going to bother me, and I should be able to be heard by the Public Utility Commission." You guys have the ability to have your opinions listened to, whereas a butters may be not, or people maybe not. So I totally appreciate what you're saying, and you're totally right. So I would suggest that, because there's some other events, that the three parties just agree, planning commission will get all of their comments and recommendations to the applicant by X date. You're not going to do it by June, and keep it dating to May, or whatever, so that everybody can, you guys aren't rushed, and you can incorporate all the public comments, and then anybody else here can write to the applicant and say, "What about this, what about that?" Or it's incumbent on the applicant to also address some of the issues that come up, and then when they file their application, part of that application is, "Dear PUC, I held a public hearing, and this is what people said, there was this issue, and we responded to it this way. There's that issue, we don't care about it because it doesn't matter." You know, that kind of thing.
Brooke, thank you for this. Stephanie, is that, could we all agree on a date now, and that's the date?
I think that's fine, and I agree with Brooke that setting a date is important for the process, just to make sure all the comments get included in the petition, because the the commission does look at those. But I, I do wanna clarify that the letter that went out did note this 40-day deadline, but I just wanna read it, it's that the, the statute says that municipal and local planning commissions may make recommendations within 40 days of the petitioner's, the middle of the 45-day notice, but they also have the opportunity to make revisions to the recommendations within 45 days after filing the petition, just as a matter of statute. And then wholly separate from that is the intervention and participation in the docket, where you'd be able to participate in the hearings and cross-examine if you wanted to. So there's different levels of participation for the planning commission, and failing to file comments in the beginning, I just wanna be clear, does not foreclose opportunity for the planning commission to participate in all those various levels. So I do agree with Brooke, though, for the purposes of this, it would be, it'd probably behoove everyone that there be a date set and we move forward with the opportunity. I think also the original letter went out with the intention to file a petition within the first quarter. Since that deadline is now pushed back, the 40-day period is less relevant as well. If they had filed their petition at the end of March, we would be in a very different place right now.
Yeah, I'm completely amenable to setting, setting a schedule. It can be kind of non-bonding on both of us, but we can set deal dates on when you guys will give us feedback, and, and you can work from there. I can't like give like a, we will file our petition on June 18th or something like that, but we can certainly work on a schedule that's, that's, that's public, um, and that we can hold each other, hold each other to. And again, I'm, I'm happy to follow up in any way that we need to. Site visits are always helpful. We did a site visit in 2016, a bunch of that information that we got from those initial rounds of feedbacks, were included in our newest site plan, especially around our aesthetic mitigation, where and how we're screening and what species we're using, but we're happy to continue that conversation as well. We'll do it on a timeline that will work for the town.
Here's one more.
I had a couple of questions, but how is this project gonna be owned? Is it will be an LLC, or will it, when you contact the people that operate it, you go to corporate, you're contacting corporate headquarters in California? Which is?
So, the entire energy industry is kind of run through project LLCs. And so all of our legal agreements and everything run through Randolph Center Solar LLC, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Nextera Energy Resources LLC, or, or if it goes into our yields code, it'll be a Nextera Energy Partners. The company I work for right now is Nextera Energy Resources LLC, which is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Nextera Energy, Inc. And so it will be an LLC, um, it's a wholly-owned subsidiary of Nextera Energy Resources.
Of what?
They don't have our legal offices.
So we're, the folks here, we're to understand that you are a company that has no assets other than your electricity sales. Is that correct?
Well, this, this will be our asset, our interconnection agreements are all our, our assets. It, this is, I mean, like, I think, I think Seabrook Nuclear is an LLC, and this is just.
Yeah, so is Vermont Yankee, and when it stopped producing electricity, it had no revenue. And it, it still is not resolved on how it is, it is decommissioned. It's still, Vermont Yankee is not resolved about, um, will the solar panels be, in this case, since it's an LLC, unless the license or certificate of public good says, in the event that you no longer sell electricity, um, these, that you shall remove the following items. If it doesn't say that in the agreement between the, approved by the public service commission, the PUC, then when they stop selling electricity, it's there and it's their bankrupt. And two years ago, when we met up at the Little Red Schoolhouse, a question was asked, did the members of the Randolph Select Board, when they ran for office, run with the notion that they would be negotiating with a, those five people with a Fortune 200 company that understands these rules? And I, I just said it should be a daunting task for you to represent this town to make sure that the corporation which has no assets has very strict and defined rules about what is left when they quit doing business and what they have to put money aside to take care of. And they will have an interest in putting aside the least amount and being the least restricted that you're willing to do that. Because every one of the things you ask them to do will come out of their pockets. And everything you don't ask them to do will be in the same sort of limbo that we have with Vermont Yankee today, which doesn't have enough money to decommission the plant after for 30 years the plant made good money. So, um, I would not wish to be a member of the planning board or the select board because they're bigger, smarter, and they have, they know how to come to small communities and other than that.
So.
They're weaker and more practiced.
We can supply like an organization chart that shows our corporate structure. We can provide information on the decommission bond. I think a lot of that is, is all done with PUC, sort of the public debt process.
Thank you. One of the interesting things about this evening's meeting is that the questions that the community has asked were not the questions that were asked in 2016, two years ago. There's a more practiced eye here tonight. There's a recognition that, um, over the last two years, people are kind of looking at it with sides of their eyes about, about what happens if one of these, if this proposal were to come back again under a new ownership that apparently has not made the pledge, that if this town doesn't want it, that they won't, that, they have not made that pledge. So the town and the selectmen and the planning commission, the deal you get, um, if you accept one, is basically the one you're gonna have to live with because there's, California will no longer be accessible to you. Only this plant here with the electric sales contract will be accessible. And who knows? In maybe 15 years, more efficient solar panels or off-sea wind will be producing electricity at a rate that renders them uncompetitive. And that's when they fold up. And if they have no assets, if they're not selling electricity, that's where you'll be. That's a tough one. Easy for me to say, isn't it? How about you?
I think you guys should have town council to review it. We can provide information and, 100% certainty of field.
Carolyn.
Carolyn Lumber of Randolph Center. Do you name every one of your solar things after the town that you're putting them in?
Not always.
Well, I don't know if people in Randolph Center would be, are very happy with this being called Randolph Center Solar.
Yeah, I mean, I could see if there's some kind of assignment we can do. I mean, that's the LLC it runs with, but I mean, we have others like DAVR Board or Coolidge. If, if it's really an issue, if, if it's like a town condition or something that we change the name of the project, I'm sure we can figure that out. It'll require us work from our attorneys to assign things.
I think it might be a good thing. I don't think that Randolph Center, our small little village, wants to be known as having the biggest solar. We'll, we'll be stuck with it anyway, but I don't think we want it with our name on it.
Sure, we can, we can consider a new one.
I just didn't get the name of the company that Nextera is a wholly-owned subsidiary of.
Uh, Nextera Energy Resources LLC is our development arm, and it is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Nextera Energy, Inc., which is our parent company that also owns like Florida Power and Light, which is a subsidiary.
So if Nextera, excuse me, Resource of Energy Resources LLC is under, Nextera something else, and that's under something else, Florida?
Nextera Energy, Inc. is the overall parent company, and they own right down to Randolph Center Solar. Underneath that is Nextera Energy Resources LLC that controls all of our development. Seabrook has its own company, Florida Power and Light, where the utility, where the equivalent of Green Mountain Power in Florida, that has its own company. These are all, they all serve different purposes. And if, if, if you guys really want it, I can supply an organization chart. We're a publicly traded company, so you can actually, you can actually trace it, it's all, it's publicly available information, but we can try to provide an org chart, organization chart of these entities.
That would be good.
Yeah, an abbreviated one that would show.
Abbreviated means still honest, right? I mean.
Yeah, we just, we just own like, you know, hundreds of these projects, so, I mean, you know, our entity in Oklahoma, you probably don't need to see on that great tree. You probably just wanna see Nextera owns this company, owns this company, that owns Randolph Center.
And so Next.
You wanna watch that.
Nextera, Inc. is the overall parent company of everything.
Yep, yep, that's the one that's publicly traded. You can look it up, our stock price.
What do you reckon on that gigantic change?
I think we're around $90 billion. We have about a $12 billion EBITDA. Um, I don't know exactly what our revenue is. Very large. Six largest energy companies in the country.
All right, sorry, I was just, we've got two hands up. That'll be it.
One quick comment and one question. Comment is, I really appreciate you guys asking about landfills, and because those really are the extent you can, those are the appropriate places to be side milking. While I can't speak for the land that is currently under consideration, I can say as someone who's had, I have only 15 acres, and the last time my land came up for availability, when the previous people stopped working it, I had three farmers, three dairy farmers, and one horse farm approached me for my land, so I had a lot to pick from. All of them desperately wanted my little 15 acres. So I do know that at least in parts of Randolph Center, ag land is very highly valued. The question I have was to follow up on something Brooke asked, and sort of for Gail, if you all do not have easements, like you don't get Green Mountain Power's permission to use their lines, I'm assuming eminent domain is part of your toolbox?
No.
Is that not, but, correct or no?
No, no.
Legally, it's not?
Legally, it's not.
Okay.
We're not a, we're not like Green Mountain Power, we, it's not, we're not like that. I don't know what the exact thing is. We're not a public utility. We don't have the power of eminent domain for our transmission.
Brooke, your question? Shouldn't the speech sound much clearer?
That's a very short, I promise. I just wanna make one, maybe there may be comment just to clarify, and that is, I said some, that I have an opinion about the role of the public service department in these proceedings. That is based on the role that the statute prescribes for them. I wanna be very clear that I have great respect for Stephanie, that Holmes, who I think Stephanie's pinch hitting for tonight, is a young lawyer that, that's now come aboard. I think their lawyers are great. I think it's, it's the statute and the role that they're supposed to play that I have the corral of. So, great respect for you, Stephanie. The question that I have is this. According to, I looked up the ISO New England grid queue information, the system impact study that had been commenced by Ranger Solar in July of 2017, it's listed as W slash D, I assume that means withdrawn. But my question is, what is the current status of the system impact study? And since it was previously applied for what was learned from that previous study, and how far along did it get?
Um, it didn't get very far along, um, at all. So when we applied the, there's some advanced, this is one of my outside knowledge, but there are inverter models that we have to do that, that show like voltage regulation and stuff, they're called PSSE and PS, PSCAD models that they have to do. And our GE inverters that we are applying with, um, the modeling at GE didn't quite match what ISO New England was seeing, and you have a certain amount of cure period to cure those deficiencies, and if you can't cure it in that time, you're, you're withdrawn from the queue. That's what happened to us. And so this is why, from July onward, we've been doing analysis, our contractors, GE, Siemens, PTI, um, have been working with ISO New England to, to figure out those modeling issues. This is, this is an issue that's happening in solar projects kind of across New England. New England has very stringent requirements on these modeling that, that aren't seen in like other larger ISOs. So we now are confident, and we've been working with ISO New England to ensure that those models are adequate. We will be filing it, it might have gone in today, keep watching the queue if, if you're interested, um, because I approved the application wire request this morning. So we will have a queue position, if it's not found deficient, if there's something else we need to provide, um, next week at the latest. And then there's a scoping meeting where we speak with GMP and Velco about overall issues, what's the size of the project, what inverters are we using, are there any? Initial feedback from GMP, we had that scoping meeting in July. GMP gave very high-level feedback, and it was like, we don't really have any concerns here on thermal and voltage issues. So we will not have a system impact study. I, I can't remember exactly how long it takes to, what, how long their study process is. So before we file our docket, it's not, it's not apples, apples, but we're gonna have a look, independent load flow analysis performed by the same people that are, are doing that engineering modeling, Siemens. They will do a model themselves, an independent load flow, that kind of models what we can expect, and then we will supplement our docket once we receive that system impact study. Ideally, we would have a system impact study before we start our CPG. It's just not where we are, and it's not where pretty much any solar projects are. So we'll get there.
So where are we at? Can we, can we informally agree June 1, we can have our comments back?
Yeah.
That would be an acceptable date for everybody?
Sure, if you can just send me like an email or something, in the notes, in the minutes, if people in the community can also get you their comments. So we can.
Oh, all right. So in full disclosure, I've been on the planning commission for nine years. I put my name in with the select board to be on the planning commission, which will be tomorrow, hopefully. But my question is more, does the regional planning commission have a say in this? Do they have party status? Should we be partnering with them and getting their comments and working together? I mean, are they gonna be at the table?
The regional planning commission is also.
Okay, and so should we be working with the regional planning commission?
I mean, that coordination happens differently in every locale, and it depends on the resources of those entities and how they operate. Right, so often the regional planning commission gets involved and helps support planning commissions, but it can also be independent. I mean, there's a lot of different configurations.
Okay, so it's not set?
No.
And that's typically what we see, we usually, we notice the Autocueche or local planning commission or whoever it is, but usually they coordinate directly with the municipality and then kind of supply comments, but we're happy to skip directly with the planning commission as well.
All right, we're gonna end it there. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance. You gave us a lot of valuable information. Now we have a really important fact to make today.